Building Commissioner on alleged zoning violations of the Northampton Regional Landfill seeking discontinuance of the use as a regional sanitary landfill. This affects map ID 42-089, originally published on May 29th to June 5th and continued from our last hearing date on June 12th. Again, this is, I'm David Bloomberg, Barry Smith is, and Sarah North are the other two members who are voting on this, and Bob Riddle is the associate member attending the hearing. Just at the outset, let's do a two-minute recap of procedures and schedules, this time two minutes, not 45 minutes. At the end of the last hearing on the 12th, it was understood that we would begin this hearing with the presentation of the appellees' argument and evidence, but I understand by agreement of the parties, the appellant is to open this hearing with another half hour of time to complete his presentation. Dates looking forward, by agreement last time, I think, were briefs will be due August 21st, any rebuttal briefs will be due September 1st. The next hearing on this matter will be on September 11th, and then by agreement of the appellant or with the appellant, our decision will be due September 30th, 2008. Which means that, other than tonight, our only other night for a hearing on this is September 11th, after all the briefs have been submitted and hopefully the members of the Board have had an ample opportunity to review the material submitted. Which is to say that I think tonight, we sort of have to try to finish things, because we would like to reserve September 11th for the sole purpose of testimony and direct response to questions from the Board, as opposed to any further presentations or public comment. I'm hoping that at that point in time, we'd be in a position to close the public hearing. So we do have this room, there's nobody in this room after us. As we go forward, we'll see how things go with timing and if there's consensus to take some sort of a break at some point. But hopefully, we can finish the appellant's presentation, hear from the appellees, both the city and Amoresco, and then if there's any remaining public comment. On public comment, I would make the request for the sake of time for everybody, that if somebody has spoken before, it probably shouldn't be necessary to speak again. Certainly, we would ask that information need not be repeated, if it's a position or statement or information already given. Yes? Yeah, and the suggestion has been made that actual parties to the action, meaning the group of people that are the actual appellants, it might make sense to use your attorney to speak on your behalf. That having been said, I'm not going to prevent anybody from speaking. But I will ask that comments be limited to avoid repetition and limited as to time, just because once the information has been given, we will take it under advisement after it's been given once. So unless there are any other procedural questions, I think we're going to start with Attorney Pop to finish the half hour of time allotted for his presentation by agreement of all the parties. And I'll repeat that, I'll ask everybody to remember to identify yourself by name, any members of the public by name and address, and I've agreed with the stenographer that she's welcome at any time to ask people to speak up or to give a name if that's been forgotten, so be aware that she may be asking for help too. Go ahead, Sarah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Peter Pop represents the appellant. And I appreciate both the Board and the other parties agreeing to give me a little extra time. I assure you, it'll be not even a half an hour, possibly only five or 10 minutes, because I think it is important to let the other side have an opportunity to present its case, and I'm therefore going to not try and argue about facts that they're suggesting in their memorandum. I'll have an opportunity later. I do want to mainly deal with some sort of legal issues that frame the decision you have to make, which is going to be based on facts that are presented, but it's important that everybody have a clear understanding of what the issue is that you have to decide. And that's what I'm going to address briefly in a few minutes. I might make reference to the Board. I now realize the size of the print and your ability to see it are not necessarily in equilibrium, and I do have a handout in case you did not get a copy of this exhibit. It was provided to Wayne. I don't know, do you have a smaller version of this?
Was it provided recently or with your original?
It was provided on Monday, I believe. I have copies of...
This, the...
Yes.
Yeah.
This is a condensed version of that in a slightly different font, but all of the actual information is precisely the same. Just before I get to that, it'll take a few minutes to go over that, just a couple of things to conclude what we began saying last time. I did suggest that I would hopefully get some joint understanding with the other parties about the versions of the ordinance over the years, so that we all in agreement about that. My understanding is, they're accepting what we've presented so far, and so I won't have further on that. I think I suggested we were trying to stipulate to some facts that might be helpful to the Board due to a variety of reasons. We're not going to be able to do that, so I'm just reporting back. I have, early this week, sent the City Department of Public Works a public documents request seeking, I think it's 11 or 12, specifically identified paragraphs of information concerning the landfill. It's my understanding, after talking with Ms. Shepherd earlier, that the DPW will be able to cooperate with me, and some of the things are readily available, some are maybe on a computer, but we're going to try and cooperate on that. So without that information, there's no point in sort of going further about that. Except one matter, the issue of tonnage, the amount of tons of solid waste that's been deposited in this landfill over the years. That seems to be in doubt, in terms of the DPW will be providing tonight. It's accounting of what they feel the history of the facts show. That does not square with information we have obtained from DEP. We're trying to analyze what they have with what we have and see what the differences are. I don't think it makes sense for me now to start anticipating their case. Let me just simply say, in the final brief, I will attempt to put together what we feel the correct facts are, based on all the information, including information we haven't seen yet. And if there's some documents that reflect facts that are different than what we've done, I will correct anything we've said before, and if it's something I feel is important, I'll attach it to the memorandum, obviously providing a copy to counsel. So now to hopefully five minutes or less on the legal issues, and then I will have completed my less than 30-minute presentation, and I'm sure you'll be happy to have the other side go forward. Last time, there were questions from the Board members, and this is why it was after the hearing that I realized, well, maybe I need to, or we all need to pack up a little and look at what the issues are. Questions were coming from the Board about, well, this isn't a change in use. It was a landfill, you know, in 1969, up until it became a regional landfill. In 1990, a landfill is a landfill. That's not a change. And then there were some other suggestions that, well, the Amoresco Gas Electric Generation Facility is a common aspect of a landfill, you know, why is that an issue? So that's why I want to just take a couple of minutes, because the issue isn't simply, was it a landfill then, and is it a landfill now? The issue is the degree to which the uses of the property have become beyond what a non-conforming use is allowed to be. And just briefly, coming up to the Board, I have a history of what I'm calling the three stages of the landfill when it began in 1969. Number two is when it, in 1990, started being a regional landfill, and most recently, a few months ago, when the landfill gas electric generation facility went in. And we have described applicable provisions of the zoning ordinance, which were triggered during the years of this facility, and there's no argument that this facility began as a conforming use due to what was then the existing zoning. However, there started to be a series of amendments to the zoning ordinance, including requirements for a permit, which was not obtained under the 1974 amendment. A non-conforming use was then created because of not having the permit, but it was allowed, it was a grandfathered non-conforming use. We're not saying that in itself was a violation. Same thing in 1975, when the requirement for a special exception became part of the ordinance. Again, the use was still the same, we're calling this non-conforming number two, because a second type of permit was not obtained, but still not a zoning violation that would be enforceable. Then we get down to the special permit requirement from the City Council, somewhere between 1975 and 1988. Again, our view, non-conforming number three, another kind of permit, not obtained, but as long as a landfill use continued relatively the same, there was no violation per se in any of those three non-conforming uses. The problem happened starting in 1990, not simply because it became a regional landfill, but because the use, the intensity of use increased to such an extent that these nonconformities did not allow the landfill to go beyond its prior uses. And there is law, both in the zoning ordinance and in General Law Chapter 48, Section 6, which describe, and this is the crux of the question, describe the degree to which uses can intensify, even if it's still a landfill, and where is the line about it's non-conforming, it doesn't have permits, it's gone too far? And the questions are really, under the ordinance, were the changes by virtue of the additional amounts of refuse, the additional trucks, the additional impacts, which we heard testimony about, were those changes permitted changes in a non-conforming use under the test for how one looks at that? And secondly, what does Chapter 48, Section 6 say? And the language in the ordinance, I have a Board, I'm not going to go into it, that summarizes the key tests, I'll do that in my brief, but, and I am in agreement with counsel for the DPW and Amoresco, it basically, and without getting into this in much length, comes down to three tests that one has to look at. Does the uses of this landfill reflect the nature and purpose of the non-conforming use which was in effect when the ordinance amendments, and there's several of them, took effect, question one. Second, is there a difference in the quality, character, and degree of the resulting use? Quality, character, and degree. And thirdly, does the resulting use have a different effect on the neighborhood? And we have provided testimony about each of those, particularly the effects on the neighborhood, and the differences in the quality, character, and degree of the use. So back to the first hearing, merely because it was a landfill and it's now a landfill has not answered the question. I don't necessarily agree with some of the cases that my opponents have cited to say, under those cases, no problem, but I'll let that go to the end. So I'm hoping with this quick journey through a complicated area of non-conforming uses under Massachusetts zoning law, you have an appreciation for the context of what we did in round one. And with that, unless there are questions, I'm happy to let the other side go forward.
Okay, thank you. Was it a question? I'm just reading your little notes to the users of the podium. Do not lean into the mic. I'll try not to do that.
That mic's not on.
Oh, good. That is really...
It's on.
And don't lean on the podium, I'm going to be in picture.
Good evening. My name's Thomas Mackey. I'm an attorney at the law firm of Mackey, Shea, O'Brien, PC in Boston, Massachusetts, and I represent the Department of Public Works in this zoning appeal. And I wanted to walk through what our presentation is going to look like tonight in the classic, you know, tell them what you're going to tell them, tell them, and then tell them what you told them. And I also want to sort of provide a framework for the discussion, the presentation that we're going to have, and respond a little bit to what Mr. Koff said. First of all, I filed on Monday, pre-hearing memorandum, about 20 pages long. I think we had something like 17 exhibits, I'm not sure exactly the number right now. And that document pretty much speaks for itself. The presentation tonight is going to be comprised of four individuals who are going to be making a presentation. We'll start with Ms. Shepherd, the city solicitor, who's going to talk about the historical, the history of the landfill from 1969 and through its permitting, and also talk about a prior zoning request for enforcement that was made back in the late 80s. And I would just respond to Mr. Koff's comment that this is round one. Well, actually, this is not really round one. This might be round three or four, maybe it's round 14, I'm not sure which, but certainly there's been a prior request for zoning enforcement back in the 1980s, before the Lyon landfill was constructed, and that was dealt with by the city solicitor at the time, and it was determined that the kind of permit that this chart would indicate that the appellant's or claiming is needed, was determined at the time it wasn't needed, before the Lyon area of the landfill was constructed. So that's what Janet's going to talk about. Then, the building inspector, Mr. Patello, is going to just talk about what's in his file. And frankly, what you're going to see is that zoning enforcement, the response to that zoning enforcement request. And we're going to have a couple of PowerPoint slides, we're not going to overload you with PowerPoint slides, because there's just so much paper that it can get overwhelming. Most of them are probably exhibits to the brief, there may be one or two that haven't been made exhibits already. Then, Mr. McElain is going to make a presentation, Peter McElain. He's really got a lot of historical knowledge. He started as the health agent in 1977, and has been health agent for a very long time, is no longer today, but has been in and out of that job, I think, and recently in an interim capacity. And he's going to talk a lot about operations. What did the operation look like? Did the operation change? Also, some of the historical issues that were raised by the appellants, as though they're new, and that they're new effects, and that the new effects are attributable to the fact that their landfill is accepting waste from outside of the city. And our contention is, well, those aren't new effects. Those effects have actually been the same effects that have always occurred, and there's plenty of documentation to that effect. How many times can you use "effect" in one sentence is the question. So that's what Mr. McElain is going to talk about. And then Jim Lorilla, who's a city engineer, is going to talk about a little bit more contemporaneous information. Particularly, what he's going to deal with is the calculation of what we believe that the tonnage is, that has been disposed in the landfill historically, based upon the best evidence that exists. It's the only documentary evidence that exists. And I think Mr. McElain may actually introduce some of that information, I can't remember how we've set it up, but as we go through the PowerPoint slides, you'll see that. And Jim's going to talk a little bit about the city's expenditures in response to odor complaints that have occurred recently, to demonstrate that the city has not just sat there and done nothing, that there's been a very significant response. Notwithstanding the fact that odors have existed at the landfill since as far back as the records are maintained, and as admitted by witnesses that were here last week, you know, we've lived with this for 25 years, which is well before 1990, when the claims, you know, change in use occurred. So, I think that's our presentation, in terms of sort of an overview of what you're going to see. I believe that Ms. Shepherd is also going to file with the Board tonight, sort of, we have put together, really, an excerpt from the brief with a lot of supporting documentation. It's in the nature of what I would call pre-truck, what one would expect to be called prefiled direct testimony, but it's not prefiled, number one. It's just to make sure that the record is complete, and we have copies that we'll share with you as well. So, now if I would, if you would indulge me, I'd like to make just the legal presentation and just walk through the pre-hearing memorandum highlights. I guess at the outset, let's make sure, I think that Mr. Koff characterized it pretty accurately, in terms of what I understand the basis of their appeal is, and that is that something happened in 1990 that constituted a change in use. And they characterize that change in use as essentially being the conversion of the landfill from one that was ostensibly intended to accept only waste from within Northampton to a landfill that accepts waste from other communities as well. Our position is that that difference doesn't constitute a change in use that would rise to the level to require any additional permitting. The source of the waste is essentially irrelevant. It doesn't matter. Waste is waste. If it goes in the landfill, landfill is a landfill. It's the same landfill whether it's taking waste from here or neighboring municipality.
Could I interrupt and ask a question? Are, so are all parties in agreement that the Board is being asked to apply this Bridgewater versus Chuck Graham three-point sort of analysis? Can we use that as a framework, or you don't necessarily want to concede that, because that was one case?
Well, there are other cases that help you to understand how that's been applied by the courts.
I understand different facts.
And there's also, I think it's really important not to gloss over the language of Section 6 of the zoning act that implements the, not, the standard for non-conform, well, not the standard for non-conforming use, but the protection that exists for pre-existing lawful uses. So, the answer is halfway there. Yes, we can agree that that's half of the standard, but we want to make sure that the Board is focused on the fact...
Start with the statute.
That the statute says, and it's quoted on page 10 and 11 on my memorandum, and why don't we, we'll start there, we'll back up to the other stuff that I've got. It says that, except as otherwise provided, a zoning ordinance or bylaw shall not apply to structures or uses lawfully in existence or lawfully begun. Now, there's no contest that the use of the property as a landfill was lawful. There's no argument about that. So you start off with the bylaw or ordinance, which in this case, there was an ordinance passed sometime in '74 or '75, we concede that, that said you needed to go to either the City Council or the zoning board for a special permit, in effect, for a heavy public The question is, does that ordinance apply? And the answer is no. At the outset, the statute says it shall not apply. But then it goes on to say, but it shall apply to any change or substantial extension of such use. It goes on to say, however, that pre-existing non-conforming structures or uses may be extended or altered, provided that such alteration is permitted by a finding from the special permit granting authority. So our contention is that you've got to first determine, though it's a threshold matter, whether there was something that happened that arguably rises to the level of a change or substantial extension. Okay? Now, that may be breaking it down and deconstructing the case law a little too much, but I just wanted to emphasize the fact that the purpose of this law, frankly, is to avoid takings. I mean, the government has a lot of authority, the government can come and take your property. It can take certain aspects of your property rights, but it can't take it without compensation. So when the government comes in and says, listen, you can't use your property anymore for the purpose which you're making of it today, because we decided we want to pass a zoning ordinance that says X, Y, and Z, well, that's perfectly within the police power, provided that there's a mechanism in place for compensation for those rights. And as a result of that, what's happened is this jurisprudence developed that said, listen, all these zoning bylaws and ordinances that don't provide for compensation to owners whose rights are being restricted, have to have a mechanism to protect pre-existing uses. So it fundamentally lies in constitutional protections of property rights and landowner uses.
And the analysis is the same even when, as in this case, the landowner is the city?
Well, that's a good question. I really don't know the answer to that, but the fundamental genesis of the taking, you know, of the non-conforming use provisions in a zoning statute are to protect existing uses. And the reason why they're protecting them is because the government doesn't have the authority to take them without due process and without compensation. In the case of a city, actually, a city has the ability to completely exempt itself from zoning. So I think the analysis is probably going to be somewhat different. Nevertheless, I just wanted to give you the understanding of why does this exist? It's not just a willy-nilly thing that somebody thought up because we want to, you know, encourage people to continue to, you know, do things that they did in the past. No, there's a reason for it, and it's fundamental to our constitutional system. So, the appellant's basis is, hey, it became a quote, "regional landfill." We're not going to quibble with that, although we're not going to adopt the terminology. They presented some testimony, we, we'll, our presentation will deal with some of the assertions that were made during the course of that testimony. The summary of the DPW's position is contained on page two of our pre-hearing memorandum, and then there's a lot of backup for the rest of it. First, let's deal with sort of the legal standard. In order for this Board to make a decision that differs from Commissioner Patillo's decision, you have to reach unanimously to overturn it. Any one dissenting vote is going to uphold the decision. Number two, it's the appellant's burden. It's not our burden. We could just rest, but we felt it would be important to present a case. So burden of proof is on the appellant's, it's got to be by affirmative decision. What did Mr. Patillo find? He basically found that the landfill in the parcel has been in use as a landfill ever since prior to the 1990 zoning enactment, and therefore, there's no reason to take enforcement, which is consistent... which is consistent with the position. We agree 100% with that. Secondly, buttressing that is the fact that in his file, he found the 1988 zoning enforcement request that essentially was identical to this one, in which the, before the new lined cells were constructed.
But in contemplation of the new...
Right. Trying to head it off of the pass, apparently.
So, somebody tried to stop this in '88?
Right. And you'll see from the chronology that there were some things in motion. The permitting process had been well in motion. The permitting process for this started in '84. There were landfill groups... I'm using a loose term I can't... landfill study groups that comprised members of the city government, as well as some of the appellants, in which these, the lining of the landfill and the whole process of doing that were discussed. So, it wasn't a secret. And apparently, somebody who lived out there felt as though, "Listen, I think that you need to get that special permit." Well, the city solicitor decided that it wasn't required, and the zoning enforcement request was then denied. As far as I know, it wasn't appealed. And unfortunately, that individual is no longer in this group of individuals, but one might claim that there's some collateral stoppel there or other, you know, bar to proceeding now. So, that's number one. Number two, there's a statute of limitations. There's a six-year statute of limitations. It says, once you've got to build a permit that is issued by a duly authorized building inspector that authorizes the use, whoever has a problem has six years from the date of commencement of that allegedly wrong use to bring an action. And after six years, no action, no proceeding shall occur. So, we went back. I think it was in Mr. Patillo's file, the building permit. The building permit says right on it, proposed use, municipal landfill. No action was brought within six years.
Are you aware of any exceptions to that, to that six-year statute of limitations?
There would be an exception if the use that was being made was not the use authorized by the permit. There would be an exception if the person who issued the permit wasn't duly authorized to issue the permit. That's all I'm aware of. And I've litigated that. Sometimes you win it, sometimes you don't. Last, sort of major bullet point in terms of our legal argument. There's something in... The lawyers here will get it, and I'm sure everybody else will understand it. That, I'll call it "too little, too late." Or, geez, what happened over the last 18 years? The "come on" argument. It's called latches in the law of equity. Law of equity is sort of an oxymoron, but in equity jurisprudence. It basically says that if a person has sat on their rights to the detriment of the other person, knowing what's been going on, and it would be inequitable to now say, "Stop," then that person who sat on their rights has lost their ability or their right to come in and complain. There's no doubt here that there was plenty of notice. I mean, this process started in 1984 with the publication of an environmental notification form. The environmental impact report was declared complete in 1987. There was a landfill study group. There were, there was a claims committee. A lot of this has to do with the lining of the rear portion of the property, although just a continuous extension, as the original plan had indicated, that it was all going to be landfill. But the process of lining it and the process of bringing in out-of-town waste was part of a very comprehensive process that everybody knew about. It started in 1990. Certainly, they're not... I don't think the appellants are arguing that a lot has happened since 1990 that would constitute a change. You know, that now we've got fresh rights because something new has happened. So, it's been 18 years. The case law is really clear. In the case of citizens claiming that there's been a zoning violation, latches is a legitimate defense. There's a Garabedian case where a fellow constructed an airplane runway and after 10 years, with a building permit, after 10 years, the neighbor said, "We don't want it anymore." And the building inspector said, "It's been there for 10 years. You've known about it. I'm not going to tell them they shouldn't be allowed to use it anymore." And that was upheld, all the way up to the appeals court. And there's some other cases we've cited to that effect. So, if 10 years is enough, you would think that 18 years would be enough.
In those cases, did they also cite or you a Section 7, or did they just rest it on...
No, it's a separate and independent defense. It's not, it doesn't, it's not determined by the existence of a building permit.
I see.
It's really just knowledge, detriment to the party who's moving forward, and the passage of time. So, one of the points that we want to emphasize from a factual perspective, most of those are going to be introduced by the people who make presentation. I just want to check through my 12 pages of facts here to see if there's anything that I want to emphasize before they come up. I guess I would say one thing. And I don't want to quibble, but when Mr. Cough was presenting the third bullet of the Chuck Ram test, he said, "A different effect on the neighborhood." That's not really what it says. It says a different effect, different effect in kind on the neighborhood. So, it has to, the significance there is that it... You've got trucks going by your house. Okay, I've got trucks going by my house. If you come in and say, "Well, I've got trucks coming by my house," and it's been going by your house for, you know, since prior to the change or the alleged change, that's not enough. Continuation of the same impact is not enough. It has to be so significantly different to be different in kind in its effect on you. Now, I'm not sure exactly how that's interpreted, but what the courts have said is that the natural progression and growth of a business is not something that was designed to be stopped under this non-conforming use analysis. In other words, natural growth and progression, and we've got some cases that cite some very significant growth in the size of activities that were deemed to be protected under non-conforming use. And I think that the reason behind those cases is because the appellants, the people who are challenging the uses, really didn't identify anything different as a result of the, you know, as a result of the alleged change. And so, most of our emphasis tonight is going to be on the fact that there were significant impacts. This is actually a really terrible bargain to have to be stuck into. We have to demonstrate that the landfill had negative impacts prior to 1990.
For a long time.
And the fact is, it did. And some of those continue to exist today. Some of them have been ameliorated, and some of the ones that were talked about last week aren't attributable to the operation that's going on today. Let me just hit the real high points. The... One. Hanum Brook and the red staining, the iron flock, which was, a lot of pictures of that. There is in the record, a letter dated 1969, before the landfill was built, from a person named William Doublegate in the State Department of, Division of Water Pollution Control, to the Division of, Department of Public Health, saying, "Hey, before, you know, you guys issue that permit, I want you to know that there's red staining going on down there so that if in the future someone complains about red staining, they don't blame the landfill that's going to be put there." So, naturally existing conditions or whatever was going on prior to the landfill existing already had caused some flock staining. There's no information whatsoever that supports the argument that flock staining is coming from what's gone on since 1990. There's none. This was an issue that had been raised as early as 1979, I think, and was dealt with all the way through and was one of the impetuses for actually building a lined landfill. So, that has nothing whatsoever to do with the impact of the decision in 1990. So, that's a red herring. Secondly, there's been arguments that the tonnage went from here to here. You know, you saw a PowerPoint slide last week that showed 10,000 tons in 1990 and then something closer to 50,000 tons since then. There's a couple of things wrong with that. First of all, the slide didn't contain any information about prior to 1990. The data that was used underlying the slide, based on the information that the DPW has, indicates that 1990 had much higher volume than that and that prior years had volumes that are very consistent with the volumes that are coming in now. So, it's not like the tonnage went from down here and jumped up and it stayed up here. You know, pre-1990, it's down here. It's actually a little bit more like this. That's the best evidence that we have. So, one might say, okay, so what's the consequence of the 1990 change? Well, it didn't really affect the tonnage that much. Source of waste? Yeah. Waste is coming from other municipalities. But does that affect a change in kind on the neighborhood? Does it a change in intensity? Is it a different character? Is it a different purpose? I don't see it. Municipal landfills have been defined as inclusive of regional operations. So, even if you went under the original definition of the zoning, which says municipal landfill, it would still fall within that definition. And that's the zoning. Unless it's changed, that's the zoning that we're living under. We're living under the pre... We're living under the 1969 zoning. That's our legal right. There's been a lot said about odors. There's no doubt that there's been odors. There's also no doubt that there were odors in the past. Landfills, naturally, the waste in landfills degrade. They degrade into gas. The gas carries odors. The odors can escape, that gas can escape the landfill. Odor's what happened regardless of whether or not the landfill was lined or whether or not the landfill took in out-of-town waste or outside the city waste or inside the city waste. There's no attribution whatsoever of an odor problem to the fact that the waste came from outside the city. In fact, the odor problem pre-existed. And in fact, almost a million dollars has been spent over the last couple of years for gas control in order to mitigate that issue. And the complaints are way down. Mrs. Fedor testified. We've been living with this for 25 years. Again, long before 1990. Ms. Heisenberg, who testified, didn't live here then. She can't testify about what existed before. Traffic. There was a lot of talk about 18-wheelers. There was a traffic study performed by Bruce Campbell and Associates in 2002. That study says that basically, there are very few... They did a traffic count. They went out and observed the trucks. They observed the types of trucks, mostly pickup trucks or straightbodies, smaller type truck. No 18-wheelers were observed. And that they, there was... According to Mr. Huntley, you can't get an 18-wheeler in the main gate. It's got to go around the backside. And the ones that apparently that do come in are cover material, not refuse. Cover material has to come in anyway, regardless of whether it's a city-only facility or, you know, a so-called regional. The traffic study demonstrated that the intersections at the time, the key intersections, were operating at an A or B level, which is essentially being satisfactory. Very little history of accidents. So, and finally, and I'll stop with this because I'm probably telling you everything you're going to hear already. Traffic is basically a function of tonnage. You know, how much stuff comes in the gate is going to determine what kind of trucks, how many trucks you're going to get in the gate. If the tonnage has remained roughly like that, generally, your traffic is going to remain roughly like that. You might get a different mix of traffic depending upon the nature of the operation. But bottom line is that you're still going to get a volume of traffic that's going to be somehow reflective of the tonnage that's coming in front of it. And so, given the fact that the tonnage has remained sort of relatively consistent, it's been up and down. There've been some down years and there's been some up years. You shouldn't have a big jump in the traffic. I think that's pretty much it in terms of my introduction. And I guess I'll pass it over to Janet. Unless you have questions for me.
Yeah, sorry, question.
Just sort of one question. Do we have any idea of, say, how much we have collected, say, on average, yearly average fees from other towns for the use of a landfill?
I think, I'm going to have to take a buy on that, but if you don't mind, I'll pass the question along to Mr. Huntley.
And then hopefully Director of Public Works. I don't know if by individual towns or the regional towns that come in, our annual SOWE's budget, enterprise fund is about $3.2 to $3.4 million since the DPW took over in 2004. So, that should remain fairly consistent.
But do we know how much comes in from other towns on total?
We do know. We have tonnage records for those, but I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, but they pay a certain amount per year, Tom?
They do.
You should be able to extrapolate that from a table that I think Jim is going to present that's got the number of communities that are actually using the landfill. And thank you for indirectly reminding me of that. There was, there was a list shown. Remember, there was a PowerPoint slide that showed 44 communities, you know? We're taking all this waste from 40. Well, actually, it's not 44, it's 16. I mean, there are 44 that are eligible for it, but there are only 16 that are taking advantage of it. And it only represents about 13% of the total stuff that comes in. So, it's not this massive influx from these communities in this memorandum of understanding. So, but, you know, and you could probably extrapolate the tonnage that's coming in through those MOUs.
That figure seems to me to be relevant in the interpretation from Rose of it'll be for the sole benefit of the inhabitants of the city of Northampton.
Well, yeah, I mean, certainly, to the extent that it's providing revenue that makes it possible for the city to control its own disposal and to provide the advantages of that to all of its residents without hitting the tax rolls, that's a benefit. And it's exclusively to the residents of Northampton. And they're getting the...
It just would be nice for us to know that figure.
Will one of your speakers address? I'm sure that Fedor's have not imagined large trucks on their street, but your brief mentioned something about some quarries or other uses out in that area that might account for some of the large trucks.
Yeah.
That's something that will be addressed.
Jim, can you address it?
I'm not addressing it.
And Janet, can you address it?
I think Jim can address it, but if you remember from the testimony, the witness talked about an 18-wheeler out of John's Variety. That's right, that's 500 feet from Willards, which is a gravel pit. It's about two miles from the landfill. So, I think that what we are relying on is the traffic study that actually studied that actually studied the comes and goings in and out of the landfill and the trucks going up and down that street. Also, my understanding from Mr. Huntley is that, who lives in Northampton, is that there are some bridges that they can't go over so that some of the traffic that comes down Glendale Road, correct me if I'm wrong, is from out of town and is not even going to the landfill, but it's going to gravel pit.
You know, one could extrapolate. I mean, that's the basis for the statement in the brief. You could spend a lot of time staring at the Campbell report and try to figure out, you know, how many trucks are going through various different intersections and how many end up at the landfill. It's clear, however, without even getting to that level of detail, that only a minority of the traffic on, at any particular intersection is going to the landfill. So if you just extended that to trucks, it's not like, you know, all the trucks are going into landfill and everything else is going everywhere else. There is a lot of... There's truck traffic attributed in the traffic counts to non-landfill destinations.
Obviously, one of the challenges for us is sifting through some conflicting information that we have and will be hearing to try to bring it to bear on this question of whether there was an expansion of the use or the degree of use or in-kind effect on the neighborhood. And so that's why I'm curious about those sorts of issues. I realize those are very specific details, but it all sort of ties into this, the larger question here that I think is the challenge in front of us.
Well, there's... Even the Campbell report acknowledges that there are cover material trucks that come in from time to time. In fact, on some days, there are quite... There are a number of them according to the Campbell report. But very infrequent would you get more than one or two. But because of the nature of the way cover is created, it's usually generated from construction jobs where, you know, you've got excavation going on, there's a lot of soil generating. That can all come out in one big slug. So you certainly might get a slug of traffic attributable to that. Again, that would happen regardless of whether it was Northampton waste or whether it was out-of-town waste. I mean, you know, if the objective of this whole thing is to say, okay, no out-of-town waste or outside of the city waste, what's going to change? It's after a drop-off in revenue.
My name is Janet Shepherd. I'm the city solicitor for the city of Northampton. And as Mr. Matthews said, he did steal all of my testimony. But be that as it may, I'm going to make a presentation in any event. But first, I want to tell you that my presentation has a number of attachments to it. I did not scan them. And I have presented them, one copy to Wayne. He will duplicate that for you. Or my preference would be that I can just email it to all of you because I do have it in an electronic format. It's going to be my testimony, the building commissioner's testimony, Mr. Laurel's testimony, and Mr. McElain's testimony. So you will have their testimony, points of data going to address, plus the exhibits that we're all referring to. So that would be available electronically. What I have given you are the things that I was not able to scan in time for this hearing. And that's what you have in front of you. There's a table of contents at the beginning. There are actually two because we couldn't fit it all in one. It starts out with the definition of non-conforming use from the zoning ordinance from 1949. Essentially, the non-conforming use language did not change between 1949 and 1975. And I've given you all of that documentation. I've also given you some zoning amendments from 1958.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Is there a question about this information?
I'm not aware that this has been made available to us or to me.
This is a factual presentation, and it's actually... There's a copy fee right there. My apologies. I meant to give to you the fourth ear. I didn't realize that you had a copy fee. Sorry. The zoning amendments, starting in 1958, describe municipal use. That's all it says. It says municipal use is exempt in all of the residences. It's the same in 1974, and it changes in 1975 to include municipal recreational, and I think there's one other category. But essentially, the definition of municipal use hasn't changed. And that was upheld, that a landfill was a municipal use in 1975 in the Rose case. I've given you in my testimony the history of the site assignment, beginning in 1969, when the Board of Health decided that we should have a landfill. There were actually a couple of sites that they considered. The current site is the one that was picked. The city council did an eminent domain taping. And subsequent to that, some of the neighbors objected. They objected to the Board of Health's site plan. And on April 20th, 1972, the Rose case was decided. And it was decided that a landfill was a legal use for that property. We've done the eminent domain taping. We started using it as a landfill. And frankly, that's continued for the last 30, I think, 34 years is my best math. So it has been a landfill since 1972. It continues to be a landfill. And I read through the testimony that was presented last week to you. I didn't see anything that was a significant change that... I mean, I've given you actually in that booklet copies of the testimony so that you can see for yourself that they have not met their burden of proving that there've been significant changes. The other witnesses will talk about the tonnage. I'm not going to get into it. I'm going to leave that to Jim. But there haven't been significant changes. One of the other things that I've given you is the city council votes. Under the 1975 zoning ordinance, the city council would be required to give a special permit if there was a change in use. There... What I've given you are the city council votes in 1988 through 1991. If they thought that they needed to get a special permit, they would have gotten it then. They didn't think that there are, you know, probably 20, 30 votes in that time period about the landfill, about study groups for the landfill, about having the mayor apply for grants for the construction of the new regional landfill. If they thought they needed a permit, they would have done it then. Somebody actually did raise that issue in 1988. The city solicitor at the time said, no, you don't need a permit. There was no appeal. There certainly isn't any appeal in... We don't know if there was an appeal to the Superior Court, but there certainly wasn't an appeal to the SJC because there are no records of it. If it was appealed at that time, it would have stopped. So our understanding from the best records that we have from that time period is that there was no appeal. And the landfill went on and the landfill continued. And it has continued since 1980. I believe it was finished in 91. So from 1991 into the current, it's been a regional landfill. So I think that, you know, we've addressed and will continue to address through the next set of testimony that there hasn't been a significant change. And as Mr. Matthews said, the burden is on the appellant to come forward. In fact, Mr. Fedora and Mrs. Fedora did come forward. And we will see that in 1990, the city paid a claim for something. I don't know what it was. I only have the minutes. I've given you the minutes of the Claims Committee. And the reason I can't tell you anymore is because when I went to look for the records of the minutes of the Claims Committee meeting, they were missing. So what we have are, what we believe are, the minutes indicating that they brought a complaint forward and they were paid some amount of money for whatever damages they suffered. So for them to come now and say that there was damage, if there was damage, they were paid for it. And it was at least 19... I'm sorry, I don't remember exactly, but you do have it in your records. They were aware that there was a landfill there and there was some accommodation to them by the city, probably 20 years ago. So I don't think that they are in a position to bring it forward again. We did our best to deal with it at that point unless there was some change. And it's a bare burden to show that there's a change. And I think if you read through last week's testimony, two weeks ago, you will see that they have not gotten to the level that they need to under the case law. I'm not going to go through the zoning again. Mr. Matthews has addressed it in his brief. You've got it in your documents. You will have it in my testimony. If you have questions, I would be happy to answer them. And I do want to answer the one that we raised about whether the city is treated the same way. And we've always taken the position that the zoning applies to the city in the same way that it applies to everyone else, which means that we get all the rights and benefits that any other citizen have. And that you... Just because we're the city doesn't mean you can take away the use that we've had for the last 38 years. So that would be my answer to your question about is the city treated the same as anyone else? I don't know that there's any case law. I certainly haven't seen that. But we've always taken the position as the city is that if a developer has to apply for a permit, then the city would have to apply for a permit. We don't exempt ourselves from zoning.
So it's, as a matter of policy, it's not really a question of constitutional law, which is sort of the analogy that was being made.
Well, but that is the basis... That is the basis of... Yeah. But that's the basis of why a non-conforming use is allowed. If you have a non-conforming use and then you say, oh, well, you know, you can't do that anymore. If you have a pre-existing non-conforming use and you build a building, you know, you've got a restaurant, and all of a sudden restaurants aren't allowed in, you know, whatever district you're in, then the city can't come and say, well, we're going to change the zone. You can't have your restaurant there anymore. We've spent $6.9 million building a landfill. It's not right for us to have put that money... It's not fair to the rest of the citizens that we would not be able to use that as a landfill after making that significant investment of money. We should be treated just like anyone else.
I wonder if there isn't at least this dis similarity between, say, a private party and a private landowner and the city in that, of course, the city is maker and issuer of the zoning law. And I wonder if you had sort of contemplated that the cities, having gone through and approved a budget with the landfill and approved all the contracts and things that are around, that if, in fact, say, any permit was required, that all of those actions intending for this project to go through could be considered a constructive grant of any special permit that might be necessary? Whereas what private owner could... would not?
I understand what you're saying. I think that the position that we would take is that, what I've said before, which is if the city council thought that they... I mean, they were the permit-granting authority. If they thought that a permit was needed, someone would have asked that question. And in fact, in 1988, somebody did ask that question. And the answer that was given was no. It wasn't here.
But that was the opinion of the city solicitor, which is obviously not my authority. It's just the advice that the city relied on.
It's the advice the city relied on, but the person who asked the question had the right to appeal it at that time and did not. I mean, they brought it to the building commissioner. The building commissioner asked the city solicitor for an opinion. You have the opinion in your documents because I've given you the building commissioner's total file. They could have appealed that. They could have come to the zoning board. They could have gone to Superior Court. And, you know, as I said, if the city council at the time thought that someone needed a permit, they were the permit-granting authority. And that's why I gave you all of those votes, to show that it wasn't something that someone else was doing. The city council was voting on this on a regular basis for five years, setting up study groups, of which the Butters were part of these study groups. You know, we have the mailing list. We know that the Fedoras were on that mailing list. I don't know if they came. I don't know if they participated, but they certainly were invited. And there were, you know, groups that studied. I can't remember what was it called. SWOT, Solid Waste Something Team, that Mayor Mucianti set up. So there was a lot of... If you look in the Gazette, there's a lot of public coverage of the expansion of the landfill at that time. So it wasn't a surprise to anybody. And people could have objected at that time when it was built, before we spent $6.9 million of the city's, the rest of the residents' funds.
You talked about the emphasis, going back to constitutional principles, on not having a taking occur and on property rights. But Mr. Koppis is emphasizing in Section 9.1 a language that says it is the intent of this ordinance to discourage the perpetuity of non-conforming uses whenever possible.
That's not... That's not the current bylaw. That's not currently the current zone.
This is in '75. This is Section 9.1 in '75. So that language is no longer in the current bylaw?
Right.
That's right. That's in the '75.
I just wanted to interject just for a second because these are PowerPoint slides that were sort of under your tutelage. But I can sort of point out that the only purpose we have for this slide is to show... This was in 1969. This is the plan that was submitted to the Department of Public Health of the state. I know it's very difficult to read for everyone in the audience, but you folks might have it. The purpose of this is to show that the limits of the landfill line extend all the way back... It's impossible to do that from here. All the way back to Annabrook. So that entire 15th curricular right. Thank you. Does he touch the light? Right there. And this is the parcel that was taken by the city. So as of '69, it's clear that the entire thing is just going to be used. The next PowerPoint slide. It goes back to what Janet said about the SJC, but it takes it one step further. The case went to the Supreme Judicial Court on the question of whether municipal use encompasses a landfill use. Because there was a definitional vagueness in the bylaw or the ordinance. And then it was... A decision was rendered and it was... Went back to Superior Court for entry of a final decree. And the final decree is actually what is the binding judgment. And there was an argument made... There's been an argument made, you know, for the exclusive use of the residents of the city. Well, the final decree actually doesn't say that. And it says for the operation of a municipally-owned and municipally-controlled sanitary landfill site. If the trial court had thought that it was that imperative to condition this on some exclusivity, then it would have said so. Because in fact, it was the trial court that certified the question to the SJC in the first place. So you've got to... This is the legally binding judgment right here.
Is there any evidence from back then that anyone that early was contemplating even the concept of a regional landfill? That anybody has found or seen?
Would have been unlikely, I think.
So it's not that that would have been explicitly in the judge's mind. It's just that he didn't state the opposite, that it would be limited to the city of Northampton.
The analysis didn't turn on the source.
Right. Right back down.
My understanding is that there were out-of-town contractors who were given permits from 1969 through the present time to come in and bring trash to the landfill.
There's record evidence, which we... I don't think we put in the record because it would probably be just cumulative. There are a lot of organizations that were given the rights to bring outside of the city.
To be outside work?
Organizations. That were given the right to bring waste in from other towns?
Yes.
Before 1990?
Before 1990. The other issue about the tonnage changing. One of the things that changed, and I'm not exactly sure exactly what year it changed, but we started doing recycling up at the Locust Street site. That would have an impact on what was going to the landfill. One of the requirements of the grant was that we do some recycling so that everything didn't get dumped in the landfill, so that things would get recycled. And that's been an ongoing extension, not at the Glendale Road site, but at Locust Street to recycle whatever is possible.
I wanted to correct something that I just said for the record. What there exists are day tickets. And there are a lot of day tickets. Day tickets are passes that were sold to organizations outside of the city of Northampton, contractors that came around. There's a box of them. It is not entirely clear whether those contractors... It is not entirely clear whether those contractors were limited to solely Northampton waste or whether under those day tickets they were bringing in outside waste. But there are literally, are there thousands of them, Joe? And were there annual passes or also the, the daily tickets, correct?
There were daily tickets, I don't know if you have read of it.
There were daily tickets, annual passes, issued to haulers.
Issued to keepers?
To haulers.
I think maybe we'll let you hear from the people who have the factual information. As I said, I'm going to be giving you all of our testimony in electronic format. I will send it to Wayne, who will send it out to all of you. Let me just look in the chat now for a second.
You want to do this one and we'll just have, excuse me for a minute?
Yeah, okay.
Would you like to do this one and have Tony just testify as to the contents of this record?
Did you want me to speak today?
Well, I think that the, what I wanted the board to focus on is this is actually an excerpt from the letter that came from the building commissioner.
Right, with the, the letter that I was discussing before, which I found in the building commissioner's file when we first received the letter from Mr. Koppis. First thing that Tony did was to look in his file to see if there had been any zoning complaints before this year. So I'll let you-
Can you just give us one second?
Just a moment. Just a second. I just, excuse me for a moment, just for the record, while listening to testimony talking about tonnage data, I recall that four to five years ago, while working for an engineering firm, I did work on analysis of some tonnage of the Northampton landfill. I think it had to do with looking at the contract operator and how well they were performing for the city. I honestly don't remember what the result of that was, but just, just to let everybody know that that was a disclosure from some years ago.
I think that we have that study at the DPW.
Probably.
If, if any-
I can remember the memo, I don't remember what it said.
If anybody else wanted a copy of that, we could certainly find it and you can know it.
The letters that were-
Could you state your name?
Anthony Petillo, building commissioner, city of Northampton. I received the letter of request for enforcement and you would say I was surprised that I have an allegation that this had been going on for a number of years as a violation. So the first thing that I did was go through the file to see first if in fact, when the landfill was created, what the circumstances were. And did find the data, did request a map from Board of Health to see what was the land taking that was taken and to see if in fact it was the same land. That map verified that the area of the landfill has not expanded since the imminent domain taking, that it was the same that was granted in nineteen sixty-nine. The second, going through the file, was finding the decisions from the court. There was a lot of discussion and a lot of, from the Board of Health, the building commissioner and Board of Health did not want to issue the permit because they stated it's not an illegal use for that zone. Going through and reading the court decisions and the final decree, it was clearly stated that in residential zone A, municipal use was allowed for municipal purposes for the land and premises, which meant that they could use that for the landfill. So it was legally conforming when it was created. The next step was going through and finding any letters or any other violations that I could find. And then going through, I found a letter in nineteen eighty-eight, which you've got a copy of, which is there, that stated from, it was a complaint that was filed by one of the residents.
Yeah, that's one.
So a complaint that was filed and an opinion that was given by the city solicitor at the time, that the filling in of cells on the landfill of the assigned site that was created in nineteen sixty-nine did not constitute an expansion of the landfill. That any leachate facility that they were talking about creating was also not an expansion of the landfill. That this, that letter is in the file. I could find no appeal of that decision in, in that file. So that decision stood. A permit was issued and signed and consequently those, those letters are in the file. I just wanted to speak, there was discussion in my reading of the court history about this for the use specifically for Northampton. There was some discussion, and I had asked for this information from the attorneys presenting this case as to where, where this came from, because the court decision stated, there was some discussion that it was only for, for Northampton. The final decree didn't state anything about that. It said that it had to be municipally owned and operated by the city of Northampton. And it has been municipally owned and operated since that time. Those are the facts as I look at it. A sidebar on all of this, before I was a building commissioner, before I was an inspector, I was a contractor. I didn't live in the city. Nineteen eighty-five through nineteen eighty-eight, I did a lot of work in surrounding towns, worked for different companies. We were able to purchase day passes to dispose of materials in the site. There wasn't a restriction and I know other companies and contractors that were doing. So I do have that firsthand knowledge that I was able to do that. I was living in Wervington, Buckland at the time and able to do that. So I know that other facilities and I didn't want to get hung up in semantics, but I knew that other people had been bringing stuff to the landfill. Landfill had not expanded an area and that, therefore I denied the enforcement decision.
So can I ask you one question, Mr. Petillo, on the record? Is this building permit copy, I mean, it's excerpted, is that the one that you found in your files?
That is the, that is a true copy of the, issued by F. Two Hill.
Of the what issued?
That is a copy of the building permit that was issued by F. Two Hill, the building inspector at the time. And it clearly states near municipal landfill leachate facility.
So this is the permit you're relying on for the statute of limitations argument? This, there was a period of six years after the issuance of this permit to file, in effect to file a claim that we're hearing now?
Correct.
And that would have been nineteen ninety through nineteen ninety-five, maybe?
Well, the statute runs from the, the date of the commencement of the alleged use. So it would probably be somewhere in the mid nineteen ninety when they actually started to use that-
It's not six years from this permit, it's six years from the commencement of the use of the operation that was built pursuant to this permit.
Correct.
Yeah. We're all set, thank you. Yeah, it's going to take sixty seconds for, for a drink of water.
Smith, there was a part about the power plant facility and being a power plant. It clearly, in my opinion and clearly my view, this is an accessory use, it was not the primary use. There were letters in the file that discussed DQ stating to the Board of Public Works to be careful that of methane gas transmission through porous soils and with the houses being built around the area, that they were going to have to take mitigating air, mitigating steps to reduce the hazard of explosion. We had in East Hampton at that time, a house that did, that did explode because of methane. This is clearly a green environmental technic, technique, and it seemed the best engineering practice. It was not, in my estimation, the primary function of the landfill. It was to mitigate a situation of methane gas that they had to mitigate, otherwise it could produce explosive results. And I did state that in the letter and I just wanted to make sure I stated that now.
If I can ask a question, I don't know if you or someone else will, will be, will want to answer, but I was waiting to hear, when eventually we're going to get to Ameresco and the, and the so-called power plant. But either now or later in your presentation, I think we could use a little bit of guidance on, on what constitutes an accessory use, because your claim is that it's an accessory use and therefore it's lawful. Obviously, the appellant's claim is, is, is not. So we could use, I'm sure we could use some guidance on that point, will that be coming later?
Yes, that was in my presentation.
Okay, thank you.
And you also can look under the definition of accessory use under the bylaws as to percentage of area that it incorporates and revenue, et cetera. And it doesn't lies to the level of any of those.
Yeah, that'll, that'll be helpful to get, for us to get some more information on. I just wondered, Commissioner Petillo referred to a letter, this is an excerpt from the letter, the letter is actually an exhibit to the memorandum that was filed, so you have a full letter. We just cut and pasted the portion of that he just referred to, going back to nineteen seventy-eight, the landfill gas, with the point that I have in here, of course, because this is, you know, an issue that goes back to the-
The other thing, just for down the road maybe, is I haven't heard any, any further discussion about any objections to standing of any of the appellant's. Is that going to be addressed or?
I mentioned in Ameresco's pre-hearing memorandum-
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm here, Krieger, representing Ameresco. I mentioned in Ameresco's pre-hearing memorandum that we, we addressed the issue there and I'll be referring to it tonight. We addressed it there on behalf of both parties.
Right, okay, thank you.
Do you have any questions for Commissioner Petillo on?
We're all set, thank you.
Thank you.
Just, before we start, there was a recent planning board hearing scheduled here at seven o'clock, it's been moved to the hearing room. Somebody was here for planning board, for the city council, for the city of all hearing rooms.
Did everybody hear that? Nope? Planning board's not here, it's the city hall in the hearing room upstairs. Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name is Peter McElain. From nineteen seventy-seven to November of two thousand and three, I served as the city's health agent or director of the Board of Public Health. And as such, I was responsible for the operation of the landfill. Now, one of the things that, that I'd like to explain about is the landfill's impact on Hanum Brook. And unfortunately, the landfill did impact Hanum Brook. Earlier was referred to a, a letter from Mr. Double Day, and a portion of that is cited there, which indicates that there was pre-existing iron oxide seeps in the Brook before the landfill was ever sited. This was in response to preliminary proposals to utilize one of several locations in Northampton as the next landfill, or actually the first landfill in the city. And he specifically calls attention to the existence of these seeps as an indication that the landfill itself didn't cause all of the problem that exists in Hanum Brook, but it certainly caused some of it. In nineteen eighty, January twenty-ninth, Mr. Michael Fedora wrote a letter to the Board of Health and among other things, called attention to the red material that was in his Brook. Subsequently, after a number of, of tests were run, it was definitely confirmed that a plume of leachate from the landfill was impacting Brook, again, causing initially the red staining, growth of iron bacteria that subsequently was evident downstream. Another letter, this one from Mayor Muzanti to Erwin Brakey, who was in nineteen eighty-eight. Now, Mr. Brakey wrote to the mayor again about impact on Hanum Brook. Mr. Brakey owns property through which the Brook flows below the landfill. And the mayor, in his response, referred that problem to me and I subsequently met on a number of occasions with Mr. Brakey. But there was ongoing problems, ongoing impact from the unlined landfill on Hanum Brook. Another question has arisen about odors. The same letter from Mr. Fedora, January twenty-ninth, nineteen eighty, he referred to a smell in the Brook. And it was subsequently determined that that was the result of the dying of the iron bacteria that bloomed on occasion, depending on weather conditions, and definitely caused an odor or an impact in the area immediately around the Brook. Another letter in nineteen eighty-nine from Mayor David Muzanti to myself as health agent, asking me to follow up on a complaint that the mayor had received from a property owner, owner of property at fifty-eight Glendale Road, whose tenants had complained about an odor from the landfill. And indeed, it was, it was definitely landfill odor primarily at the time from sludge that was, was brought into the landfill. One of the ways to determine the status or the, the size of landfill operations is to look at the equipment that's being used. The more waste that's being handled, the more equipment, the larger equipment, et cetera, that is needed. And this exhibit shows three excerpts from three different landfill contracts, nineteen seventy-eight, nineteen ninety-one, and two thousand and one, which cites the equipment that the operators would be providing to, to do the work. And, and it's identical equipment down the line, a loader, a compactor, the odd truck here and there. But there's, there's no significant change in the kinds and in size of the equipment or the number of pieces of equipment that were being used.
So there wouldn't be any other equipment used at these times other than what's on this list?
Ah, they might bring in an occasional piece, for instance, a chipper to, to chip accumulated brush. It isn't something that would be used every day, but it would be used a couple days a month or, or maybe a few days, three, three, four times a year.
It looks like the most recent one here also lists paper compactor equipment in the recycling area, not necessarily operating on top of a landfill.
By then, the contract was, was all incorporated into one, one operation to provide compacting. Previously, paper wasn't compacted on site. It was, was just dumped into an open top and shipped off. But economics indicated that it would be better to ship compacted loads, so that was an added piece, but it, but it really didn't affect the actual burying or handling of trash.
Or the volume of what was delivered, whether it was trash or paper?
That, that's great. That, that equipment that is cited here is to bury the amount of trash that comes in on a daily basis.
We're going to pass on this one because it was already covered by Commissioner Petillo. That's just that-
In December of nineteen eighty-four, the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs was in receipt of the environmental impact, a notification, ENF, environmental notification form, that the city prepared and submitted as an indication of intent to build another cell on the landfill site. This is a letter from the state setting a time and date for the hearing on that proposed construction of the new cell. Still on the same original fifty acres, but the hearing, as the state requires, was set up and held in the hearing room in city hall.
May I have a just for a moment, Peter? That this was ultimately approved by the secretaries, is that correct?
Yes.
And, and that approval on the EIR was fundamental to going ahead and getting the EPR- And that approval on the EIR was fundamental to going ahead and getting DEP permission for the construction of the lined cells, is that correct?
That's correct.
So this evidences the commencement of the permitting process for the lined cells in 1984?
Yes, and it was a long drawn-out process, a number of hearings along with it.
Do you remember where that scoping was held, the meeting was held?
Yeah, it was held in the City Hall hearing room.
Do you remember the date of the certificate on that?
We have.
Yeah, that's, it's in the information, this was just, this is the hearing itself.
Yes, this is submitted, when was it approved, accepted?
May I answer? It's in your materials, I believe, it was March 26th, 87.
I'm losing the thread here. What's the relevance of the fact that that process started in 84?
Notice.
Oh, just know, okay. So that people had knew or should have known that this was happening, that the expansion was going to happen, so that they would have been aware to take action, to object within, for example, statute of limitations? Is that where you're going with this?
Correct. I mean, there are other ancillary benefits of the fact that the process commenced that early, and it was so long gone out, there are multiple opportunities for public input into the environmental impact report process. You know, there are, the environmental notification forms published, there's a 21-day public comment period on it, the environmental, the draft environmental reports are all published, there are comment periods on those, there's the Department of Environmental Protection Solid Waste Management Facility permit published, it had an appeal period. All of those things were steps that were taken, none of which were appealed by any law.
So is it worth seeing if the appellant's would stipulate, too, the fact that it was widely publicly known that this expansion was occurring around 1990? Or are we almost done with this, or does this?
We're not going to do too much on those.
Oh, when you talk about expansion, you're talking about expansion.
Talking about the extension of the landfill into the rear portion of the parcel.
That's what you're talking about. Because the first, the original on the lined section was archaic, right?
May I?
One of the results of the leachate impact on the Brook was the state DEQE at the time saying that there could be no further horizontal expansion of the unwind landfill. The original intent was to excavate and fill as you went, to cover the trash and to just extend back to the 50 acres. But after the 80 notice of leachate in the Brook and subsequent testing, DEP or DEQE said no further horizontal expansion or extension of the existing unwind landfill. Any further expansion or continued use of the facility would have to be in a lined landfill. And that process of going through the approvals, the design, ultimately constructing the facility, really resulted from having to go from the unlined to the lined facility. It was still utilizing the space that was there on the 50 acres to contain trash for disposal purposes.
So is it your testimony that you had personal knowledge from back then, that well prior to 1990, and I don't know how early your involvement would have gone, it was widely known that the taking of the full 50 acres was for the purpose of using ultimately the full 50 acres for landfill purposes?
Yes, no, I have to qualify that. I came on the scene in 1977, but from that June 20th, my first day, the discussion had always been to fill the facility, the 50 acre facility, and just moving from front to back, excavating and making more space and utilizing the sand and gravel that was there to cover the already buried trash.
This is really essential to the city's position, that when the property was taken in 1969, the entire property was taken for the purpose of use as landfill, not the first unlined cell, leading to an expansion to the next lined cell. That's really a fundamental issue here.
Yeah, and that was the intent from my first participation in any discussions in 1977 forward, to continue to operate the landfill. And we would have, to this day, would have been just excavating and filling, except that the impact on the Brook and new regulations resulted in having to have in liners installed. But it was, that's really just a continuation of the original activity.
May I just interject for a moment, Commissioner? That significance of this June 9, 1969 plan, that was the first PowerPoint slide, is that that was approved by the Department of Public Health.
That's documented.
After, after an appeal.
Right.
Okay, so, and it depicts the entire thing. So at that point in time, in 1969, there were, it was lawful under the local zoning, and it had been fully permitted by the Board of Health, and it had been approved by the Department of Public Health, which is the next layer of permitting. So all of the things having remained the same, they would have just gone all the way back to the rear parcel, all the way to the.
But environmental standards changed.
And that's evidenced by the statement from the building commissioner. She said that technological change is now mandated.
Right.
So it's just a progression in the increased environmental controls. Those are beneficial changes.
Right.
Let's see, where were we?
Next one, yep.
Oh, we had this back one.
And in February 1988, the City Council took a final vote to authorize the mayor and the Board of Health to seek loans, grants, et cetera, and appropriate that money in the total of about $6 million, $900,000 for the construction of landfill and related equipment, related buildings, et cetera, for the operation, continued operation of the landfill. And this decision was after months and months of discussion before the Board of Health, and myself spent many a night here with the City Council, explaining what we wanted to do, how it was going to be done, and ultimately approved by the City Council. There were a number of City Councilors at that time that sat on the advisory committees that led to this step of building the new cell with the new cells. And it was certainly widely known around the city that this was an ongoing process, the intent, and that the landfill had to go to a lined facility in order to keep operating. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Again, I was thinking maybe it might be, makes sense to take a break in about 15, 20 minutes.
We, we, excuse me, I think we'll, wait, it's gonna be 15 minutes, right? Everybody want?
We'll see.
Your name, sir?
I'm Jim Lawler, I'm the chief engineer for the City of Northampton. We have a series of slides here that relate to studies and information regarding the landfill and impacts because of the landfill. This first slide is related to traffic, and it, there's a couple of excerpts here from two studies that characterize and quantify traffic impacts that are related to the landfill operation. Generally, they support the statement that the landfill is the source of the minority of traffic, and that intersections in the vicinity of the landfill are operating at acceptable levels. Mr. Mackey spoke to the first excerpt, which says that the vast majority of commercial vehicles that are weighed at the landfill are pickup trucks or other single-body trucks, including some packer trucks. There are very few tractor trailers that access the site, estimated by the city to be less than 10 per year. The excerpt in the bottom is from a draft environmental impact report that was prepared by Dufrane Henry in September of 2005. This paragraph summarizes a level of service analysis for intersections in the vicinity of the landfill, and concluded that, well, it states that the level of service type of calculation is rated from A to F, with A to C being acceptable, and the results indicated that during both the morning and afternoon peak hours, both intersections were operating at level of service A, except for North and South Pond at Route 66, which were level of service B. So basically indicating that the intersections were operating in accordance with standards.
Who engaged this company for this study?
The City of Northampton engaged Dufrane Henry to prepare a draft environmental impact report for the Phase 5 landfill expansion.
For the what?
The Phase 5 landfill expansion.
Oh, this is good.
I'll apologize upfront for the size of the numbers on this particular slide, it's an important slide, and I want to spend a few minutes describing to you, so if you can find the information.
17.
Do you have it on, Mr.?
Sure. Where are we? Okay, I can't see a number of sources for these, for the records, and I guess the best way to describe this is just to go through column by column, what the information is. On the first column on the left, obviously, is years, the next column is loose cubic yards, and from 1969 to 1990, the landfill accepted waste and estimated the incoming waste based on a cubic yardage basis. There was no scale available or installed at the time to record tonnage, so records were kept in loose cubic yard basis.
Just so I understand, is that, you mean, the size of the trucks coming in, or?
Based on the size of the truck, right. From 19, from the latter part of 1990 through the current day, there's a scale installed in the landfill, and the records are kept in tons. Let me discuss the source of the information. From 1969 to 1984, the loose cubic yardage information in this summary table was excerpted from a memo written by Peter McElain, provided to me at the time, employed by Dufrane Henry, was dated in April of 2003, for the purpose of generating landfill gas model projections. So the summaries came from there. From 1985 to 1990, for those years, there are annual tonnage summaries available that were submitted to the Department of Environmental Protection.
Yardage summaries, right?
Yardage, cubic yardage summaries. So those numbers are from 85 to 90. The source of the numbers, the tonnage numbers from 1991 to 2007 were annual reports that were submitted by the city to the Department of Environmental Protection. So the question becomes, when you have a cubic yardage information, you need to somehow try to convert that information to tonnage, so that you can get a sense of the tonnage in the early years of the landfill before the scale was put in. So the, all the columns that are to the right would say tons at 240 pounds per cubic yard, tons at 100 pounds per cubic yard, et cetera, all the way over to the right, or a variety of conversion factors that are referenced at the bottom of the table. The conversion factor of 240 pounds per cubic yard is interesting, because it was a conversion factor that was picked by SES engineers in 2002, as a part of a study they were doing for the city at the time on landfill gas generation. SES engineers had been, they had a contract with the EPA on the landfill methane outreach program to do feasibility studies for gas utilization for communities like Northampton. So they had picked a number of 240 pounds per cubic yard as being a representative number to convert loose cubic yards to tons. So all the numbers under that column are the converted loose cubic yardage numbers to tons. And you can see they're quite variable, some, many years, the numbers were over, ended up being over 100,000 tons per year. The low number, which is the next column to the right, the low conversion number is 100 pounds per cubic yard. There were two references found for that number, one of them was an Environmental Protection Agency document, a February 5th, 1998 memorandum. The 100 pounds per cubic yard was also on the low range provided by Robert Corbett in the Handbook of Environmental Engineering. So that's sort of the low, the low number, and you can see the converted cubic yardage to tons there are generally in the range of 30, 30 to 40,000, 30 to 40,000 tons per year, general range. Just some other factors, the next column was published value by the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality. The column to the right of that, the 500 pounds per cubic yard, is the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection conversion factor. And the last three columns are the high, low, and the middle range provided in a textbook called Integrated Solid Waste Management. So you can see that there's a wide variety of conversion factors for loose cubic yards based on the source that you look at, and how it's applied. So this, this slide shows an excerpt from the draft environmental impact report, also prepared by Dufrane Henry in January of 1986. The reason this is important is it shows the loose cubic yards of waste brought to the landfill from 1969 to 1984. These numbers are consistent with the numbers in Peter McElain memo that I mentioned a minute ago. It's also interesting that the footnotes to this table from this document indicate that records of loose cubic yardage from 1969 to 1981 were prepared and compiled by Deldewood, which was the landfill operator in that timeframe. Records compiled by the Northampton Board of Health began in 1982 through 84, which was the moment of the data presented in this particular document. This next, this graph shows a sort of a visual to take a look at a variety of the conversion factors. So on the very low end of the scale, we just saw that 100 pounds per cubic yard was the low end of the conversion factors that we found in the references. And that, those are exhibited from 69 to 90 by the blue bars, and then from 90 to 2007, which is sort of the lighter blue bars to the right, indicate the tonnage data. The magenta, the magenta numbers are 220 pound per cubic, cubic yard conversion factor that was contained in one of the references, and then the 305 pounds per cubic yard was the high of the range found in the reference Integrated Solid Waste Management. So you can see that depending, that the range of numbers in the conversion factors can greatly impact our perception or our current knowledge of the amount of tonnage that went into the landfill at the time.
Do you think that we should discount the two higher ones? Because do you think it's possible that twice as much tonnage was being delivered there before 1991?
Can't really speak to that. I will say that if we discard, if we discard the two upper ones and just look at the lowest one in the range of all the values that we found, that the, that the tonnage that came in, even in the early 70s, is comparable to the tonnage that came in after 1990, particularly in the early to mid 90s, just by looking at the graph, you can see that there wasn't a huge increase in tonnage and change in 1990, so, you know, I think if you want to throw out the two higher numbers and just look conservatively at the, at the lowest conversion factor, I think it shows that the tonnage is generally, you know, within a. is generally, you know, within a reasonable range from the data landfill open. Are there questions about how that information was compiled or is that clear?
I don't think you can answer this, but I will be curious to know where the chart came from that we saw two weeks ago from Mr. Fedora. But I imagine that someone else will have to answer that question.
Yeah, was there no overlap in estimating cubic yardage after you got a scale?
Not that I'm aware of.
It would have been interesting.
Not, not that I could see, not that I could find it.
So they stopped measuring cubic yards, yardage when the scale was put in?
I believe I've read somewhere that they confirmed, what is the permitted tonnage of the landfill right now per year?
It's currently fifty thousand pounds per year.
Fifty thousand tons per, so prior to nineteen ninety, was there a cap on the, on the permit? That it couldn't have been measuring in tons between the scale?
I'm not aware of a regulatory limit on the internal waste of that kind of thing.
Thank you.
I guess I'll apologize for this, David, as well. This table is, summarizes a lot of information about the number of communities that have used the landfill since the landfill became regional. The data is presented from nineteen ninety-one to two thousand and seven. The data contained in this table is all summarized from annual reports that were submitted to the Department of Environmental Protection. The data, I guess the main purpose of this is to provide more detailed information to the board regarding the number of communities that were using the landfill through the years and the percentage of tonnage that came from those towns. If you look at very far, on the two, under two thousand and seven, the far column on the right, there were, indicates seventeen municipalities using the landfill with about eleven, eleven percent of the waste that went into the landfill in two thousand, calendar two thousand and seven, being from those towns. The number, Tom Mackey had mentioned the number sixteen, community towns, and that was mentioned in the brief. And the discrepancy between those numbers is that the tonnage for the city of East Hampton that came into the landfill wasn't municipal solid waste, it's basically written screenings from the wastewater treatment plant. So that's, we included it here in this table as number seventeen, but it's not municipal solid waste that's coming in, that explains the difference there. But if you look, if, if you just look through the years, the range of communities, the number of communities that have come in to the landfill have ranged from nineteen ninety-seven to a low of eleven communities to high in two thousand and two of twenty-seven communities. In two thousand and two, when twenty-seven communities came into the landfill, that represented twenty-seven percent of the tonnage that went into the facility that year. On the low side, on nineteen ninety-seven, again, eleven communities came into the landfill and that represented about eight percent of the tonnage that came into the landfill that year.
Is it possible to predict a trend going forward? Do we, do you have other facilities come online? Why do we go from a peak of twenty-seven to sixteen or seventeen, do we know? And in other words, going forward, is it, can we predict, is it possible to predict a trend?
It's, you know, it's, the towns that choose to use our landfill will sometimes competitively bid, you know, open market to see where the cheapest location disposal is, and they may decide to use it in the facility. That's generally just market forces that have, have an impact in the number of towns that come in.
So of the forty-four eligible towns, they, they all, they have choices. And on average, according to the brief, since nineteen ninety-one, it's about thirteen percent of the waste deposited in Northampton's landfill comes from towns other than Northampton.
Right.
Under the memorandum of understanding.
Towns from the memorandum of understanding.
So it's not based on a measurement, it's based on an agreement?
It's based on a measurement.
It is based on a measurement. So because on the one hand, we're getting testimony that there, or statements that there are forty-four towns using this landfill, and that that's part of this big increase in traffic and noise and smell and so on. And your testimony is, we've got more like sixteen or seventeen towns using it, and what they put in there is only about, on average, thirteen percent of what goes in there each year.
Right.
Okay, thanks. Yeah.
That thirteen percent, the hundred percent number, is that all waste, or does that include cover materials? Is there some overlap because there's some waste that comes in and is used for cover because it has no odor?
It's waste tonnage.
It's waste.
So you're saying we should be able to rely on your data when we're faced with this discrepancy? We're, we're?
Well, I think, I think this is clarifying data. The information that was presented at the previous, at the previous hearing reflected information presented in a draft environmental impact report, which, which described sort of the ultimate limits of the waste shed for communities that might use the landfill, companies that might have private root and private haul.
So that information was not based on actual measure on a cubic yardage?
It was based on potential waste, potential communities that might use the landfill, or haulers that have, or haulers that have haul routes in those communities that might haul from Northampton.
But wasn't it presented as going back time, year by year? I remember correctly? No?
I don't think that, there were, we talked about two different slides that they presented prior, previously. One was a copy of a page from the environmental impact report, which showed forty-four communities.
Right.
And the point of this slide is to show it's sixteen, whatever, not forty-four. The separate slide showed the tonnage. That was total, represented to be total tonnage coming into the landfill since nineteen ninety.
Right, year by year going back to.
But that was not tied to word measure. I don't think there was any representation, one way or the other, about the volume of material that was coming in from the other towns, other than to avoid the law.
I understand, but I'm back to just gross tonnage. And it was, it just, it painted a very different picture, so I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
I think that I can explain that, just for a second. If you go back to this, if you look at nineteen ninety and you see the column for tons, see that, is that a nine thousand seven hundred or something like that?
One year jump.
Okay, but that's because mid-year, scale was installed. So the tonnage jumped until that, also, it was probably when the landfill was low on capacity, because it was, you know, the old landfill was being finished and the new one was being built. But I suspect that the ten thousand pounds that was shown on their chart came only from that number, and they didn't factor in the loose cubic yardage. I don't know, I can't speak for them, but all I know is when we saw that number up on the chart, we knew that was incomplete information.
We spoke to this slide a little earlier regarding gas mitigation. This is a letter dated back nineteen seventy-eight from the regional environmental engineer, Angelo Iantosca, and it's regarding, I guess basically exhibits the need to control the gas from landfill facilities, and it dates back to the, dates back to the seventies, and I think it's an important point there. Ned, interject this one. Another point is that if you read the slide, it says, "Since the landfill operation began, many homes have been constructed along Glendale Road." So to some extent, you know, the landfill was there, the neighborhood around it changed. Not to say that anybody's at fault for that, but these things do happen.
But you, but you couple that with the earlier statement that it was, that was widely known public knowledge that the entire fifty-acre site had been taken for the purpose of being developed and built all the way out as a landfill. That's your position.
This, this next slide is a summary of a chronology of recent gas improvements. These are basically a chronology of steps that were taken by the Department of Public Works from November two thousand and six timeframe to the current timeframe. It outlines the different construction projects and permitting efforts and things that have been done at the site to control gas, improve gas collection at the landfill, also to, to improve off-site order issues. And basically, it illustrates a number of things that have happened in the, on the right side of the slide, the second page of the handout, summarizes the landfill gas system contracts that were signed by the Board of Public Works in order for this work to happen. The value of the work is just shy of a million dollars regarding the recent, trying to solve the recent gas control issues.
How does that relate to the legal issues? Other than to show the city's trying to mitigate?
It relates to the accessory use of collecting gas and using it for electricity rather than letting it migrate off-site and damage the environment and the, the, the.
I think that your point, Mr. Chairman, is correct. It also is intended to show that there has been serious effort made in the last two years, very significant investment. We're continuing with the, is it the city or Amaraesco?
City.
Still the city?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're, we're, I'm getting organized.
Since Council for Amaraesco is in here, I'd like you just to have Peter for the talk a little bit about Williams Energy, and if I could read him a little bit, I'd appreciate it. Indulgence.
So during your tenure as health inspector, did you receive some information from DEP or DETE about the migrating gas from the landfill and what you were supposed to do about that?
Yes, and what did you do about it? We started by installing migration fences or interceptors around the perimeter between the landfill and the houses along Glendale Road. That consisted of digging a ten to fifteen-foot deep trench, or in some cases, down to the bottom of trash that was already in place, installing an impervious barrier on the outside of the trench, and then filling the trench with stone and piping as a means of collecting the gas. And then, at that point, we were venting it, initially, we're venting it in a gooseneck to the atmosphere. But all the time, DEP demanded that we do something more substantial to eliminate the release of gas to the atmosphere, and wanted us to install a gas collection system throughout the landfill. And we sought bids back as early as, as the early nineties, bids from gas controlling companies or electrical generating companies to collect the gas and utilize it in a generation system. Initially, we had a company named Phillips Energy out of Vermont, but they weren't able, for economic reasons, weren't able to complete the project. Subsequently, Williams Energy System out of Boston, I think it was, Harvard, Mass. They came in and did an initial installation of gas collection equipment, including a set of wells that were drilled into the trash and a collection or header system that was tied in to a vacuum pump that pulled the gas out of the landfill, and then the gas was burned in a flare. And that was the first step in what would have been an electrical generation system. They too were unable to complete the project because of the economics of the, of the system. And then ultimately, we received proposals from a number of companies, and the city selected Amaraesco as the contractor to build a state-of-the-art energy development, energy generation system utilizing the gas from the landfill.
And Peter, do you remember talking to me about Williams Energy and the contract that you had with them? I was personally pointing to the city solicitor.
Yes.
Okay. And you probably don't remember when that was, but I could tell you it was in nineteen ninety-seven.
Okay. And I was wanting to go into what the problem was.
Yeah, I do.
When Williams Energy was unable to actually construct the system, again, for financial reasons, they, they left a half, or half-completed project. And the money that they owed for the installation of the wells, the collection wells, that they paid a separate, or they hired a separate contractor to drill into the trash and install wells, and then install the piping to bring the collected gas to the flare, that company was owed money and sued Williams Energy. And as a result of that suit, Williams Energy got the gas rights to the landfill. Part of the deal was that the contractor had the gas rights, they would pay the city a certain amount for the gas, but then they would, would generate electricity and any electricity would be there. This contract, the contracting company then took the gas rights, and I went to Solicitor Shepherd, and she assisted us in getting those gas rights back.
And what was the purpose of collecting the gas?
To prevent migration off-site and also to eliminate emission of the gas to the atmosphere.
And what was that, Williams Energy interested in, in terms of the gas collection? Why did they want the gas?
So to generate electricity.
Okay. And, and was that something that was required by DEP, or was it encouraged by DEP to collect the gas? Encouraged by DEP for you to collect the gas?
Well, it was, I guess, it was a proverbial win-win situation. The gas that was being vented to the atmosphere was collected and the, the emission to the atmosphere was stopped, and a beneficial result occurred, the generation of electricity. So DEP certainly encouraged it, but it made it economically feasible for the city to install the elaborate gas collection system. install the elaborate gas collection system.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, my name is Art Krieger from Anderson &amp; Krieger in Cambridge, representing Amaresco Northampton LLC. Let me start by distributing some paperwork. Mr. Fiden asked that I bring hard copies to the hearing of the pre-hearing memorandum that we submitted on Monday by email, so I may hand in some of those.
I have. I have.
I don't have it with me, so...
Okay.
Mr. Riddle.
Counsel, of course, received these on Monday when I filed them. Let me start by just telling you what I'm going to cover this evening or who's going to cover it. I'm going to just set the stage for a moment, then I'm going to turn it over to Amaresco's project manager, Dan Gardner, to discuss the landfill gas to energy unit, so that we know what we're talking about. The board has a picture of it and a description of what equipment is involved. And he'll also talk about the mitigation measures, both completed and in the process for this facility. And then I will come back and talk about the arguments and some of the other factual issues that were brought up in our pre-hearing memorandum. And in the process of doing that, I will ask both Mr. McElrain and Mr. Laurel to come back up just to address particular issues for a few minutes each, all of which I hope will take not much more than a half hour.
Again, clarify this for me. The only thing I view as relevant to us is whether the Amaresco operation there is permitted as an accessory use or not. Do we need to have that much detail about the nature of the operation or the effect it has on mitigation if, when, isn't that the only legal issue? Or how much detail do we need in order to be able to get our hands around that legal issue?
You don't, you don't need a lot, but the other argument that I raised in the papers is that not only is it an accessory use, but it is actually not even that. It is an integral part of the landfill use. It's not even an accessory use, which is typically a separate use that is appended to the principal use on a lot. So I think you need to consider the Choukren test that you heard about before with respect to the Amaresco facility as with respect to the landfill expansion that you've been hearing about. You don't need a lot of technical detail, and I wasn't reporting to do that. I thought it would be useful to give the board literally a picture of what the facility is like. The actual specifications of the equipment is not anything you need to worry about.
All right. All right. Are we all on the same page? The only thing I want to know about is, what is the definition of an accessory use and does this operation satisfy it? Or, as you say, the alternative, it's integral to the landfill use, what is the legal standard and definition that we would apply to make that determination? But that, with that as an introduction, go ahead, I guess.
Well, I'll be brief, and I certainly understand the limited issue that's before you.
Yeah, sorry.
Can I ask one thing too? So you're not addressing, you're not putting forward, de-addressed the standing argument. Have I read your memorandum, tractor?
We are not asking you to dismiss the appeal based on the argument that none of the neighbors has standing. That is correct.
So that argument's off the table.
Not entirely. I do want to mention that because it is still relevant to the decision you have to make. For example, the third part of the Choukren test that you heard about is whether there's a different impact in kind on the neighborhood. I think you need to hear a little bit about who's affected, who was affected. We're not going into great detail on that, but it's relevant.
Well, I think we understand that some of the class of appellants live as much as a couple miles away, and I think we can all assume that the direct impact from smell and noise and so on is less on those, and it just upon common sense. But if, if we have appellants who are direct abutters, isn't that just sufficient to move on from that issue?
Well, I guess in effect, I'm raising the issue of where people live and who's affected, not for standing purposes, but for purposes of the merits of the issue.
Yeah.
Can I ask that you not dismiss the standing, because if you do not concede it, then if this is appealed to Superior Court, you will be deemed to have waived our right to contest standing. So we do contest standing, but if you don't want to have any evidence on it, that's fine. It's just only in the record that we're contesting the standing.
Yeah.
There's a aquifer supposedly involved, right? So people, if it were to impact groundwater and magical play...
Yeah, but I don't think that's the basis for any of the appellants.
No.
Well, certainly it's not Amaresco's, Amaresco's issue.
Yeah, okay. Well, why don't we, go ahead, Will.
Well, I guess having now said that and the Shepherd having said what she said, I don't need to do a lot else with standing. It's not weird, I think it is relevant, but I'll, I'll leave the rest for our...
We understand that you are, for the record, that you are not conceding that all of the appellants have standing. Is that sufficient?
Correct. That's correct, and we will address that in the brief.
Sorry, we're not conceding that any of them have standing.
Right. That's right.
We're not conceding that any of them...
And we're not conceding that any of the appellants have standing.
Have standing.
Correct.
That's right. And like Ms. Shepherd, I will also be addressing it in the brief as to the impact on the neighborhood part of the test and things like that. But we'll leave that for the briefs.
Just last question on this. Procedurally, I wonder out loud, does that mean we have to make a decision on standing? I guess we can...
No.
Only if we decide that there is no standing.
Yeah. Can I, if I might, if I could address that? Tom Mackey for the DPW. There's, yes, we are asking you to make findings with respect to the standing of the various different appellants. There are at least two classes of appellants. There are those which are parties in interest as defined in the statute, and those are abutters or abutters to abutters within three hundred feet. Those are the people who would automatically get notice of a zoning board hearing. And you folks are familiar with that standard. And then, and those people have presumptive standing under the statute. And once it's challenged, for example, they're not experiencing odors, then they have a burden of coming forward and demonstrating to you that they do in fact have a special indifferent interest that they are seeking to protect, a private right that's special and different from that of the general public. So parties in interest can be challenged, and we are challenging that. And we've put forward evidence, and I think that Mr. Krieger will as well, about the degree to which they may or may not be impacted as a class. Then there are the non-parties in interest, those people who are further than three hundred feet from the property line. There are a number of that. Some are...
Three of them, who all accept...
Right, but one possible outcome would be a vote, with great step would be a vote to uphold... You're, okay, I hear what you're saying. All right, and you can give us anything else you want in your briefs and that, as well as whatever, Mr. Krieger, you want us to say now.
Right. Mr. Chairman, in consideration of your question as to whether you need technical detail, I do want to submit a small packet of description, but I'll just run through it quickly. Mr. Gardner is here for, is available for questions, for questions from Mr. Coff. But trying to expedite this, let me just put it in and I'll run through it myself. So if I may. What you have in the front three pages is a description of the unit, the landfill gas to energy unit. What you have on the fourth page is one of the mitigation measures that has been installed, a supercritical hospital-grade muffler, if you will, they call a super silencer. And this, this equipment was described in our pre-hearing memorandum. We didn't submit specifications at that time, but there's nothing different here than what we were talking about. And at the back, and I'm sorry that I didn't have enough color copies for everyone, but at least you have the copies, are three shots of the unit. One taken last winter, one taken this spring, and one taken just a few weeks ago. And again, you may be familiar with this, and maybe I don't need to belabor it. It's two trailers. You can see the super silencer in the first of the three pictures, the one with the snow in it, on top of the left-hand trailer. And that replaced a unit that was about the size of a fifty-five gallon drum. This is a thirteen-foot-long unit. And you can see in the last picture, which is the last page of the packet, part of the fence, it goes along the top of the hill, separating the site from the neighbor. It runs to the left of that picture, so it's the whole top of the hill around the facility. And it runs down the hill. You can see a portion of the fence at the bottom. It's actually continuous, it had been, those sections have been removed at the time this picture was taken for repair or something, but it is a continuous fence running up the hill and across the top. The, so that's two of the mitigation measures. Those are the two that have been completed, the silencer and the fence. The third one is variable speed drives on the radiators, which enable the radiators under certain weather and gas conditions to run at lower speed, to the radiator fans to run at lower speed. Those have been done, and again, Mr. Gardner can describe those a lot better than I can. The other mitigation measure that's in the works is, again, this is from the pre-hearing memorandum, ductwork that will surround the fans and blowers, which are the source of the noise, to direct that noise away from the neighbors. It's currently not directed away from the neighbors, so this would direct it looking, if you're on the road with the trailers on your right and the landfill on your left, it would direct it back toward the flare and toward the back of the landfill, away from the street and away from the neighbors on the right-hand side there. After that is done, Amaresco will test for noise at seven locations on or near the property line around the facility that were selected by DEP. This is a DEP-driven testing program, and Amaresco believes that with the installation of the ductwork, in addition to these other measures, that there will be no objectionable noise. And in fact, if any of the neighbors is aggrieved sufficiently to confer standing today, they will not be when that is done. That will be sometime over the next few weeks, certainly before the end of this hearing process and before the September eleven hearing date and board's deliberations. So that goes to both standing and to the Choukren test, whether this facility has a different impact in kind upon the neighborhood.
Are you saying that because you'll reduce the noise, which of course is something that can be measured, as to the Amaresco issue, no, no one will be an aggrieved party because there's no, there's no more noise and therefore the claim, the argument is moot as to the, this facility?
That raises a difficult legal issue, that is, if you have standing on one ground, let's say traffic, can you then complain about everything about a facility? Or are you limited to the ground where you have standing? I would acknowledge that I believe the better argument is that if you have standing at all, then you can raise any zoning violation that you see. So I would not, I'm not currently arguing that it would be moot as to this facility, but it's not a settled issue. In other words, I reserve my right to make the argument in future. So let me just briefly run through the, a couple of points about the pre-hearing memorandum. You've now heard part of it, and of course, part of it overlaps with other things that you heard this evening. The building commissioner with respect to the Amaresco facility found as follows. "The power plant located at the landfill is not a primary use. It is accessory to the use of the landfill, and as an accessory use, it is allowed. The methane gas to electric turbine is also a technological change and advancement and is considered a best environmental engineering practice to dispose of potentially explosive discharge from methane gas." Now, I read that to, to raise both of the issues that I mentioned a few moments ago, an accessory use issue, and it is simply a technological change of the basic use, it's not even an accessory use. Tonight, from the building commissioner, you heard him focus on the accessory use, but I believe his decision can be read to make both of those points. You may affirm on the, on the second point, even if you don't think that's what he was saying, even if you think he was addressing only accessory use, you're not limited to the ground that he decided on, but in fact, I read this to mean both points. The next thing I would like to do is to put in a couple of additional exhibits, and I have put them under a supplemental memorandum, not to try and circumvent the procedural order, but just to lend some order to the proceeding, so you weren't getting a lot of loose pieces of paper. So I've got Exhibit C and D to go along with A and B in what I've called Amaresco's supplemental memorandum. And it is literally just a cover, a cover letter in memorandum form. So if I may. Okay, now let's, let's get to the part of the accessory use issue, which is the ordinance definition of an accessory use as a use that is customarily incidental to the principal use and subordinate to it and not taking too much percentage of land use. Those are clearly met those, those factors. The only criterion is whether it's customarily incidental to that. Exhibit B, which was submitted with the initial pre-hearing memorandum on Monday, gets to part of that issue. That shows from the DEP, excuse me, from the federal EPA website cited in that memorandum, the various gas to energy projects around the country and the candidate landfills for additional ones. So in every state, there are a number of operate, what are called operational projects. Well, in some cases, I guess the number is zero, but there's a, there's a placeholder for it, and in most states, there is an actual number of facilities. And in every state, there are candidate landfills, which typically are landfills of a particular size that will support economically a landfill gas to energy facility. Now, the, more of the focus probably should be on prevalence in Massachusetts. So what I put in as Exhibit C with the supplemental memorandum is a document entitled Current LMOP Landfill and LFG Energy Project Database - Massachusetts. This is from the same EPA website. We can't get away from all the acronyms and anything having to do with environmental law, so let me, let me translate. LMOP is EPA's landfill methane outreach program. That is EPA has a program to encourage and to enable landfill owners and operators and states to deal with methane from the landfill. It is, as you heard from other witnesses, it is a well-recognized and pervasive problem. And landfill gas is the acronym LFG, of course. So this is the database for Massachusetts, and in the middle column, you see project And the entire first page, that column says operational. On the second page, there are several operational, two more under construction, two that used to exist and were shut down, three candidates, and then a number of other potential ones. And again, the difference between candidate and potential has largely to do with landfill size, with the tonnage involved, because that's therefore the amount of gas generation involved. So you can see that, I haven't done an example... So you can see that, I haven't done an exact count, seven, 10, 21, 23 operational, three other candidates, and then among smaller landfills, a bunch of potential ones. And then two more under construction, et cetera. So this is not only, these facilities are not only found across the state, they are prevalent across the state, and in fact, for certain-sized landfills, they are almost ubiquitous. This is the way that EPA and DEP wants landfill owners and operators to deal with the gas problem, not just burn it and flare it off, but to do something productive with it, namely, the generation of electricity. And you can see, just for interest, two-thirds of the way down the first page, there's a reference to Glendale Road landfill in Northampton. That's one of the operational ones. You see the startup date of 2/25/08 and the description in various respects. So it's on the list. So are these customarily incidental to landfills? The answer in Massachusetts, as well as nationwide, is absolutely.
But what this doesn't tell us is how many other just landfills, there are in Massachusetts, exposed.
That is correct. Excuse me?
There's hundreds of closed landfills.
Right.
There's not that many operating.
Now, the customarily incidental phrase in the ordinance, I want to focus on that because that is the part of the legal standard that you are operating under. One could say that to be customary, it has to be 50 years old, or some, it has to be ancient in some way. That's not the law, and I would ask the board to take a common sense view of this industry as opposed to what might be customarily incidental for other uses that don't change over time, restaurants, gas stations, anything else. This is a fast-changing industry and segment of the economy and the environment. What was state-of-the-art 50 years ago was viewed with horror 30 years ago, open burning. What was state-of-the-art 30 years ago, online landfills, is viewed with horror today, and simply wasting the gas is viewed as both wasteful and environmentally detrimental today. I would say that, given this industry, that customarily incidental, that standard is met here. As you see, many of these date back to the 1990s. That is the project start date, next to the project status column there. A number of them are 1990s, some of them are 2000s, but this began to be prevalent. And the reason it did, and I think Jim Laurilla can confirm this, is that EPA made a push in 1992 to require the landfill owners and operators to deal with landfill gas. It was really the impetus for this. But I think the customarily incidental standard of the ordinance is met. Let me turn to the history in the city, and you heard part of it from Mr. McElraine, the history of the gas-to-energy efforts in the city. This is Exhibit D, that's to the supplemental memorandum. This list was compiled by Mr. Laurilla, and he can speak to it. Again, in the interest of time and bearing your counsel in mind, I think I'll just have it available for questions or clarification if needed. But he compiled this list, and you see, it goes back to 1992, and you heard about the different chapters of the story from Mr. McElraine. There was Phillips Energy in 1992. There was, that was terminated in 1997. In the meantime, in October 96, there was a contract with Williams Energy, and so on, until Williams was notified of default in 2001. The city issued an RFP for round three in 2003. That was eventually ordered to Amoresco in 2005, and Amoresco and the city executed the landfill gas purchase agreement that's described in this table. I have copies of all of the documents. I would be happy to submit them to the board. I don't hear that this issue is disputed, so I don't want to belabor the record. It's about an inch thick, but I do have copies of all the documents that are referred to on this list.
Is it accurate to say that the amount of income the city gets from this sale of gas, basically, it must be a fraction of the income that the city gets generally from the use of the landfill?
You mean, is the revenue incidental as well as the use?
The answer to that is yes.
Okay, that just, there'd be a problem here if it was substantial.
No, I understand the accessory use issue. It's my understanding, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that as of now, we have not generated any electricity that has come back from the city's revenue. We have, okay. But the contract, and we can provide you with the contract, provides what the city gets, and it's insignificant compared to the RFPs, which is what you're asking.
Right.
And we can make that document available if you would like it.
I don't know if we need the document, but if it's, maybe if the numbers involved are available, right? Does that make sense? Because there was something really wrong with this picture, if the city was making a lot of money from this, and we're being told it's.
We wouldn't be writing a landfill.
I mean, I assume between the pillars, we'll provide some figures.
Yes.
I'm just saying it would be helpful.
One page, one page at a time.
You get the point, I'm just saying it would be helpful.
You can't accuse me of putting in a lot of paper. That's fine, we'll just give the figures. Now, this history has two points, the two reasons why it's relevant. Number one is when you look at this history, it ties into Tom Mackey's argument that this too was well-known. These were official city contracts, RFPs, et cetera, DEP permits. This effort, not, the Amoresco facility only goes back three years, and it's operational even less than that, but the entire effort to have a landfill gas-to-energy facility goes back 15 years. And again, no one complained about that, that I know of. No one brought an enforcement action, tried in any way to object to the addition of that component to this landfill. So this ties into the last year's argument. The second point is, the, this was, the Amoresco agreement and facility now is the result of the city's efforts over those 15 years. So this isn't another, this isn't a private company swooping in and doing something the city had never thought of to make money off the landfill. Obviously, Amoresco makes money from this venture, but this is really city-driven. It's not driven by a private party. It gets somewhat to the notion of whether it's the same use. This part of the use is conducted by Amoresco, but it's really at the city's behest, it's the result of the city's efforts, and it's all part of the city's running of the landfill. I'd like to turn briefly to Mr. McElraine to talk about noise, but I'll preface it as follows. As you heard, neighbors have the burden of proof on any reason that you should overturn the building commissioner's decision to show that there's a violation of zoning. All you heard last time on noise was that the Amoresco facility is quote excessively loud. The phrase was used a couple of times, but that was all you heard. You got no measurements, you got no even other qualitative description. You just had a label applied to the noise. I would submit that the appellants have not met their burden of proof at all to show that that's a zoning violation, to show that that's a change in kind, a difference in kind of impacts on anyone. But to nail down that issue, if you will, if I may, Mr. McElraine will talk just for a moment about the previous noise.
We don't have any recent measurements of the noise from that facility?
No, you will, as I said, have measurements later this summer when the ductwork is installed, taken to the seven DEP-selected locations around the perimeter or near the perimeter.
And the ductwork is being installed by a subcontractor or another company?
I'll let Mr. Gardner say who's actually doing it, if I may.
Do they sort of guarantee their work?
There's obviously baseline of the noise, it's a noise, and they negated the existing condition.
Mr. Gardner can answer those questions?
Yeah, Dan Gardner from Amoresco. Yeah, the, to keep the noise levels down, we've already put in a number of measures. The ductwork there is just that, it's ductwork to direct the air flows away from the neighbors. The facility was built into the hill, basically, so it'd limit visual and other impacts to the neighborhood, while in that, the air flows from the facility go over the facility. So the intent is to push the air flows away from the property lines and the direction of the neighbors and back over toward the landfill.
Who's installing it there?
The ductwork's going to be installed by a local sheet metal contractor. It's layman sheet metal.
Who came up with the design of the ductwork?
The design is in-house design work from Amoresco.
And is it similar to what's been done at other Amoresco facilities?
Yes, that's correct. And it's more of a direction-type abatement system.
You're just directing the sound away from the neighbor.
Correct. It's not being insulated.
It's not fancy technology?
No, it's just directing it.
Yeah. How many other Amoresco facilities are?
There are half a dozen that are in operation, with another seven to 10 in various stages of construction.
And again, no measurements with the current situation have, sound measurements have been made that you have available for us?
Not at the.
Because you've sort of said that, you know, people say it's loud, but they, and I realize you're also saying in the same sentence, they have burdened proof, but we don't have any scientific evidence.
No, we don't have any official, no, no officials' noise measurements for the facility.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So if I may have Mr. McElraine address the situation, the situation before.
Peter McElraine, from time to time during the operational landfill, during my tenure overseeing the operation of landfill, we received complaints, not a significant number in comparison to other issues related to the landfill, litter from vehicles approaching the landfill, for instance, but we have received complaints about noise. The complaints resulted from several types of operations that take place or took place on the landfill, including the banging of the tailgates from large dump trucks getting the load off, and as they drive away, the thing bangs, and depending on where the vehicle is on the site and what stage of filling the landfill is at, in other words, how high up they are, the noise may extend out quite a distance from the landfill. Another source of noise over the years has been what's called bangers for bird control. It's a methane gas, a small gas tank-powered gun, basically, that periodically set for every so many minutes to a half hour, to whatever's needed. It makes a loud noise to discourage seagulls from roosting on the site. And depending, again, where that banger is located in relation to the filling operation, down in the bottom of a given cell, the noise is pretty well-contained, but there's the hierarchy go, and depending on the direction of the gun location, it could be impact people half to a mile away, and we certainly got complaints about that over the years. And lastly, when we initially installed the gas collection system, when Williams Energy put the beginning system in, there was complaints about a high-pitched whine from the motor that was used to drive the vacuum pumps that fed the gas into the flare. And as we experimented with different drive mechanisms, that sound would change, trying to, we were trying to diminish it, trying to put a housing around it to deflect the noise, not unlike what they're trying to do with the ductwork, but we hope anything is elaborate. There were complaints, although it was limited to a relatively few number of households, but there were some complaints about that, you know, this dates back to the late 90s, early 2000s.
So this testimony about the noise complaints in the past, are we back to the issue of whether there's been a recent change since 1990? Are we off of the issue of accessory use for the moment? Is that the reason for this testimony about earlier?
That's correct.
Most of this has nothing to do now with the, with Amoresco. It's, most of those complaints were other, related to other problems on the site.
Well, all of those complaints that Mr. McElraine is describing are before Amoresco. You're right, this is not the accessory use issue.
We're back to the issue of whether there was a substantial.
Whether there was a change.
Increase in the degree or intensity of use after 1990.
Right.
Or a change, or your, and so her testimony is to show that noise complaints also go all the way back.
And, right, and specifically to argue that there, the noise is not a different impact in kind upon the neighborhood from the Amoresco facility.
Right.
You're right, that the point was that this, this gas collection system in whatever form has been around since the late 1990s, at least since 1996, because when I came, I'm sorry, 1997, when I came out as a city solicitor, we were in the middle of the Williams Energy discussions and contracts, and, you know, it went in front of the city property committee on a number of occasions.
But two different points here. One is, is noise complaints go way back, long predating Amoresco, and so that any noise from Amoresco is not, represents a substantial change.
Correct.
And the second point is that the gas.
Collection system.
System also goes back further than people might realize.
Right, and it's not, I wanted to make the point, it's not just Amoresco. They've been here since 2003, but prior to that time, we were trying other methods of collecting the gas and trying to generate it into electricity. Those things failed, and thus, you know, we went on to the third person who actually is going to produce some money.
Right.
Not a lot, not a lot.
Let me just ask, Mr. McElraine, you mentioned tailgate noise from the trucks. Is there any other kind of noise from the trucks typically from the landfill?
Well, yeah, there would be, you know, the motor, the sound where the motor's pulling heavy loads up, you know, especially again on top of the highest elevations being filled, the sound would radiate more. And then there's also the, I would say, the more regular, frequent sound of the actual landfill equipment that contacts and moves the trash prior to actual burial. So there's that noise, but that's more of a consistent, like if it's there, it's a noise, and it certainly would impact people, but that's since the landfill opened, that's a continuous noise. And beavers approach that.
Yes, and beaver that?
Yes.
Beavers?
Yeah, yeah. That's a relatively new, I mean, last 10 or 15 years, early on, that wasn't frowned upon, but that can certainly be heard a long distance, too.
Thanks. The last point I want to make, although that's always risky to say, is that I want to try and get a handle on the difference between the two arguments I'm making, to explain that a little bit, which is the difference between an accessory use and an activity that is really part of the same use. And I'm going to take an example that I will acknowledge is a simplistic one. I'm not comparing them factually, of course, but many accessory use issues arise in a residential context. One case involved a landing strip, you might have a tennis court, you might have a home office in different towns, those might be considered accessory uses. Contrast that with putting an addition on the house, even an addition that you're going to use for a different purpose. You're putting on a game room where you had no game room before, or a great room, or a garage. No one would call that an accessory use. It's part of the same residential use of the house with the varied activities that comprise residential use. This, I think, is analogous to that on, obviously, a larger scale, that from everything you've heard from all the witnesses and. That, from everything you've heard from all the witness and scene in the documents, this is part of how one has to deal, how it has to run a landfill. Gas collection and removal has to be done to avoid explosive conditions and migration. The modern way of doing that is to convert it to electricity, and that helps, as was testified to, that's a win-win situation. Primarily, it's a win for the city or the operator of the landfill. And so that is really part of the same use that has been going on in a less modern form. It's the modernization of a use that goes back to before the bylaw and gives rise to the grandfathering argument you heard.
So you're clarifying the distinction, but your argument is under either theory the Amoresco operation is allowed?
Yes.
Okay.
And to be absolutely clear, and therefore, on either theory, the building commissioner's decision should be upheld. Thank you.
Thank you. So is that, anything else from the city or Amoresco? What's happening next?
I'd like to.
Excuse me, sir.
Do you want your public testimony?
Since we know, I've asked before, there's no one here who wants to speak in favor of the city's position and opposition to the appeal, I think I'll turn to Mr. Kopp. Did you want to have a few comments, or I can see if there's anyone from the public who would like to speak, if you have a preference which we do first?
I don't, I need about a minute or two.
Okay, I might want to hear it from you, and then I will finish up with anything the public can.
I did want to provide to the board the more condensed version of what this is. It's the same text, but.
Better format?
Easier format to read, perhaps.
Okay. I know, I'm going to listen.
And then, the only other thing I want to do is clarify by having Mr. Fedor answer two or three questions, because the suggestion was, one of the statements have been made that he has been compensated for the damage to his property, I would say, by the city. And I'll just ask him several questions, so if you could come up.
I'm waiting for a two-second window.
Mr. Fedor, did you submit a claim for damages to your property?
Yes.
What happened to that claim?
Nothing happened to that claim.
Have you been paid by the city?
No.
For damages to your property?
No.
At no time have you been paid?
No.
And you heard Ms. Shepherd's testimony, you would say that's not correct?
That's true.
Okay. I. Mr. Kopp, can you, brief, will you be giving us a little bit more background on the chart we saw about tonnage? Because again, I think that's a very relevant discrepancy in the evidence we've seen.
I can, I thought of doing it one of several ways. One would be to have the person who generated the data explain it and put in the backup where the information came from DEP, and clarify why that information differs and what issues we have with the presentation of the DPW, through testimony or whatever. I think instead, I'm just going to put it in my brief and attach some documents as I may need to. I've tried not to take a lot of time with back and forth, you know, we're trying to be respectful of the board's schedule.
Okay.
But we will address that.
I mean, it's up to you, but.
No, we intend to do it unless, you know, I could do it in affidavit form or just in a brief.
I'll leave it up to you, but it sort of feels like that would be helpful to us because, speaking for myself, I think I understand the basis for the numbers the city has presented. I'm not sure I understand the basis of the numbers that Mr. Fedor presented two weeks ago.
We want to explain both, both ours and differences we have with theirs, and then it's up to your judgment. And obviously, there are a lot of legal issues I haven't addressed in much detail, like accessory use and so forth. All those will be in our brief, rather than, take your time tonight.
Right, okay, thank you. And then, I think, yes?
I just wanted to clarify that what I was going on in terms of Mr. Fedor's claim was what was in the city council records. I have no personal knowledge.
Right.
And I gave you those records.
Yeah.
And so you can see what's in the records and what's in the minutes.
Right, I think, yeah, I think we understood that one year earlier.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you. So just before we hear from, maybe I'll just ask, are there members of the public who still want to say something? Before we do that, to repeat, our next, we've already covered the deadlines for briefs, I think people are aware of that. September 11th, the plan will be, or it is our desire and intention, to not hear any more public testimony, to have a chance for the board to ask any remaining questions of council based on our month review in the interim. And I think it might make sense, because of that passage of time, to afford council the opportunity for the equivalent of a closing argument, to sort of bring closure to the proceedings, and then after that, we'll be in a position to make a decision either that day or certainly by September 30th. And I don't know how many people want to speak, but in the interest of time, again, I would repeat my request that we not sit here, that we try to avoid repetition of things we've already heard, maybe there's not many people with the energy left. And two, that we try to limit our comments to just a couple of minutes each, given how long we've all been here. So somebody would like to speak? And again, if you'll come up to the podium, give your name and address, please.
Bob Aronson, 71 Sylvester Road in Farms.
And are you one of the?
I'm not, I'm an interested party, but not an appellate.
Thank you.
I testified, or spoke about, commented on the volume of traffic and its location. And subsequent to that, I sat for three days for approximately 90 minutes, where there was a confluence of traffic and school buses and kids at risk, I think, or present on the roadways. And if you'd like, I could document that and sign an affidavit if that's required. It wasn't, I have no qualifications whatsoever, but I'm a trained observer, I guess, and I could tell what, you know, I can discern from the vehicles where they're coming from, and a pretty good estimation as to where they're going. And you could certainly cross-check that with the weight scales at the dump, if you were interested. And I think that would validate the traffic study or not, or you could use it to consider that in your deliberation, if you think that's.
I think that anyone, for instance, may could submit a letter to your office that will go into the file, copies of which we would receive, right? So if that would make sense.
Okay.
Where were you sitting?
At a store, it's called, it's known as Jim's Variety, but I guess it's really West Farms now.
Uh huh.
They changed the name. So it's the four corners of Turkey Hill, Sylvester, Ryan Road, and West Farms Road. And so approximately a mile north of the landfill.
Linda, using her 981 Park Hill Road, I'd like to make a quick comment about Amoresco. I have copies of emails that I sent to the Department of Environmental Protection saying that the Amoresco generator, when it was put on and when it was in use, sounded like a freight train going through my backyard. And the DEP indicated that they did test the noise level, and it did exceed the acceptable noise level. So I would imagine that Amoresco and/or the attorney for the DPW would be obtaining those from the DEP and submitting those, because the DEP, again, did indicate that it exceeded the acceptable ambient noise level. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? See, nobody? I think we're ready to adjourn, but again, we're keeping the, we're not closing the public hearing yet. So we're just adjourning, briefs due as stated earlier, and then hearing here at 5:30 on September 11th. I think that, that it? We need a motion.
Motion.
Motion to continue the hearing until September 11th at 5:30. All in favor? Yes. Thank you.